I'd like to call to order the Douglasoni Board of Appeals meeting Wednesday, September 12th, at 7:04 PM. The first agenda item is Brown North LLC, which is an update. Tim?
Yep. Good evening.
For the record, Tim Barlow.
North Village. Ed was, he had a medical procedure today, so could not attend. Unfortunately, you have me again. Here for a general update to talk about the design changes. Where would you like to start? Start with just the update?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. On the update, on the fire cistern, as we talked about the last meeting, location and size have been agreed upon, and we have funded the 53G account, and the design is being done now by StanTech.
Can you give us most, are you going to go into more specifics, or no?
Well, that's all I really have. The design's being done right now on this cistern itself. So, a size of this-
Location or location number?
Location's been determined. Yeah, we discussed that the last meeting. The location was right beside the sewer pump station. And I handed that out, yeah, the last meeting in the last package. The playground, the, that's coming along nicely. The parking lot's been paved. The fence is in around the playground area. The area has been excavated for the equipment and is all to subgrade. Equipment has been purchased but is delayed in transport and is due in next week. We have met with the rec committee. They have approved all the equipment. The overlay on North Street in front of the playground, the project has been completed, so that has its permanent pavement now. And we've provided a deed approval to the town, to the town manager to get approved. So, the deed that's going to be handed over to the town for the playground has been sent in to be approved by the town.
Okay.
So, that's sitting waiting to, we get completed and then it'll be turned over. And, that's it for an update, and then we're into the design changes.
As far as the buildings?
Yes.
Okay. All right, you go ahead.
I, did everyone get a copy of?
Letter?
Yeah, the letter.
The letter?
Yes.
That's the letter.
Yeah. I think that's the letter. Does anyone need a copy?
I think one of the things we need to discuss after Tim is about whether it's a minor change or a major change from what was approved.
So, we, in, with the comprehensive permit, we sent in, or got approved conceptual drawings of the plans. And I've always viewed those as conceptual in nature, and we've made some minor changes to the architectural features and to the, some of the size of the building itself. We kept the setbacks to the side and to the front all the same, and we added about 50 to 75 square feet to the size of the buildings. And I went from one-car garages to two-car garages. They are very similar on the exterior. And this is a practice I've done in other projects where we've done a 40B. I've had the project approved, then it takes some time between when the project is approved to you're actually building the project, and we feel how the market is, and I've made, you know, some changes to move with the market where customers wanted to go. We kept everything that was stated in the project the same. They're all three-bedroom units, two-and-a-half baths, and the townhouses are duplexes.
Jake, can you give us some guidance on?
Yeah, so let me, Tim, a couple of questions where I saw this in Ed's letter as well. The distance between buildings is staying the same?
Yes, the width of the building has not changed.
Okay. And, so where is the added square footage? Where is?
We added five feet to the rear of the building.
Okay. So, might that affect, I'm thinking of some of those, you remember how we thinned out? Dan, do you remember how we pinned out some of it on, on kind of the back edge around the curves where the-
Radiuses are?
Back corners?
Yes.
Were a little close. Is that going to affect the distance between buildings there?
No, it's not. We're going to maintain the 31 feet, the same radius going around.
Okay.
Heritage, which is now-
Allen Engineering.
Allen Engineering, thank you. Has looked at it, and they can maintain that radius going around. We had some wiggle room.
So, that doesn't affect the roadway, but also the distance from corner to corner?
Not at all. It's going to maintain the 31 feet.
And the impervious cover doesn't change any of the drainage stuff, Bill?
No, that shouldn't happen.
Okay. So, I mean, Dan, the project was specific to a set of plans. They're here in for a change. I think that the reason I'm asking these questions is there's no real particular template for these kinds of changes as to what substantial or insubstantial. So, I recall from working on the permit the first time that what we were concerned about when we were looking at the size of the buildings was their relationship to each other. You know, the bedroom counts and everything else, but I remember the boards kind of scrutinizing some of those set-offs, distances between buildings. And in my view, if they're maintaining the kind of things that were important to the board, and those things stay the same, and it doesn't otherwise affect drainage or road design, or the auto turn analysis, the ability to put cars in the driveways and things like that, I think it's certainly reasonable to consider it an insubstantial change. I think that the quirky thing about this, Tim, is that when you consider an insubstantial change, there's, there's nothing in writing. So, there's, there's nothing to determine that. I think it may be a good idea if there's, if there's an update on what those buildings' footprints may be, to at least have something on file. So, are those changes going to flow now for the rest of the project?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be the rest of the project, and we have had an as-built done on a majority of the units that are in the ground now.
Okay.
And so, we've been updating the as-built as we've been building.
Would it be acceptable to you, if the board does rule that it's insubstantial and I leave that ultimately to the board, if there was a simple one-page saying approving the design changes on file with the board, and with the condition that the, the distance between buildings shall remain the same, and any, any further changes have to come before the board, kind of a, just a quick amendment to the decision that you and Ed can record? Just, if that protects you, it protects the homeowners, I think it protects the board. So, I, even though there's no, nothing in the process specifically for that, I try and do that, just so that there's a recorded record of it.
Yeah, that would be fine. Yeah, we'd be willing to do that.
So, otherwise, I defer to the board. If there's some other thing you all see this project more than I do about the change in the design, it appears to be somewhat small in nature, but again, the project was pretty tight in nature, so it's ultimately your decision. If it's an insubstantial change, it's deemed approved. If you deem it substantial, you have to open up a public hearing to go through all this stuff and, and then approve it. The standard for review of changes that you deem substantial is, again, pretty differential to the developer's side here, where it doesn't affect, where it may not affect any of the kind of public safety things that we're drainage engineering things. You'd probably be, like, constrained to approve it at the end of the day, anyway.
Would the, going from a one-car garage to a two create less impervious material, ground?
No, it created more, but it was, the way the project was designed, with a low-impact design, there was a lot of fluff in the drainage calks.
I guess I'd wonder whether or not you've prepared any other calculations on the drainage, so that we can look at those. I mean, have you done that, or are you just guessing?
No. Allen Engineering has looked at it, and that's what they're telling me.
They've looked at it?
Yes, and that we are well within the calks for drainage. The area we added is pretty small compared to the overall area of the site.
Was there a design originally for that?
What's that?
For the, was there a design originally for that?
For the drainage calks?
Yes.
Yes, there was a design originally for the drainage calks.
So, should that be updated?
We can.
We can make that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that would be something between the engineers. I'd ask for, for Bill's comment on what he needs, whether it gets picked up in inspections and peer review, or whether-
Well, I think it's, you know, it's great that we're having this discussion. However, it's difficult to quantify this based on, you know, just conversation and without seeing something on a plan. I think that would be a tremendous help in making a determination on what the change is from the original design, so, you know, we can better assess what the impact is. Based on the verbal description, I think it's relatively minor, but I'd like to see something on a plan, so we can quantify what the issue is. You know, it's great, Tim, saying 31 feet from that corner to that corner, but unless we get that on a, on a plan, we really don't know that.
So, would a, would a post, so we're talking about potentially issuing a, a short decision bill with kind of a, a condition that required post-review to verify those setbacks and that the drainage issues satisfy your concerns on, on that issue?
It's the only way to quantify.
Yeah. And, and all that material, all that stuff is ascertainable, obviously, just their engineer can supply you with that, with that info?
I would think so.
Can you get that to Bill?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And Dan, I could, I could draft up if, you know, if, if the board wants to go this route, I could draft up something that reflects that, that that review is going to happen.
Sounds good.
So, two things. I mean, I'm a little, I was concerned at our last meeting with regard to the cisterns and the water and that whole thing. I didn't, we solved that. But, but this makes me wonder how, how you think that, I mean, you've, you've, you've done it before in other developments, I guess. Were they not written out and approved as drawn like we did, or how?
No, it was all done exactly the same.
Yeah.
So, Pam, just so, and you may, or may not recall-
I'm not a builder.
Because the, the decision went through several-
Iterations.
Versions. One thing that I do in decisions is I draw a reference point as to the architectural plans and all the plans on file, and those are the plans of record.
Okay.
So, any changes in that really should come before the board. Where a board kind of leaves, I've sometimes left it floating where designs are not final. Here, I kind of just drew that reference. So, I think it's appropriate for them to come in for the change.
Yeah. Well, maybe before the fact, right?
Right, probably should have happened previously, but what Tim is saying is sometimes these comprehensive permits are less exacting in terms of a direct reference point to a decision on file, and the board might just say, approve the architectural designs, and there can be some kind of leeway there. Every decision's a little bit different. My, my practice is to have a reference point to a decision or to plans on file, so that's why I think, I wish that request came in earlier too, but that's why we're here now.
So, the only other thing is, it's a, sure. It's a, for low, for low-income housing, whatever, it's-
Affordable.
Affordable housing.
Yeah.
And I wonder, by increasing the garage number, does that throw that whole calculation off on the affordable housing? Because I would think they'd be worth more with two garages, or?
No, it does not, no. The units themselves have to be indistinguishable from the exterior, so we build a two-
I understand that.
Yeah, we have to build a two-car affordable.
But the whole-
No. If I built a 5,000-square-foot house in an affordable project, I would have to build a 5,000-square-foot affordable.
Okay, so, tell me, what is difference between the square footage inside and that was approved and what it is currently? Is there any?
The affordable and the market rate are exactly the same. The square footage difference is about 75 square feet.
Before, what were approved? And then what were you doing now?
Yes.
So, you've added 75 square feet?
Correct.
And you've added a second car garage?
Correct.
Okay, so the, the value of that property is not-
It does not change on the affordable. The affordable-
No, on the, on the regular?
On the regular?
Yeah.
No, you know, maybe a little bit, but, yeah. It's more of a move to what the market was wanting than an actual raising the price of the project. But the affordable home is still sold at the same price, no matter what size it is.
We have the town engineer and the fire chief are here to give us some updates from their standpoint on developments.
Good plan. All right, maybe Tim can sit down, and we can have Bill come up.
Sure.
Want me to leave?
Yeah.
Thank you. Now, please.
I really like shouting from the audience.
Good evening. Couple of updates. Tim is correct, we did have several meetings regarding the cistern. We contracted with StanTech for a two-task scope of work. Task one being the design, task two being construction monitoring. The developer authorized the scope under the design portion but has not authorized the scope under the construction monitoring portion. I'm still waiting for some feedback on the scope because they objected to some of the tasks in the scope.
It's not that I'm objecting to the task. It was a pretty substantial cost for the monitoring, and I'm a little confused with some of the acronyms that she's using for what the actual task is. She wants, she has like 150 man-hours.
And who's she?
Gina, StanTech, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
StanTech has 150 hours' worth of monitoring for the cistern on the install. What I'm estimating is going to take me 60 hours to install it. So, I'm, I just need to quantify why it's so high.
So, what I would, what I would request is through the board that the developer provide a list of the concerns, so that StanTech can address them, and then we can either modify the scope or authorize the scope. I'd like to get the 53G money in the account, so that we're all set for this part of the project. That's one item. The next is, I want to kind of try and nail down a schedule with regard to this, and it can be through, you know, written correspondence, so that we develop specific milestones on when things will occur. They don't necessarily have to be dates. It can be based on unit numbers or however it's structured, but just so we have a barometer and a gauge to measure the progress on the work. So, I would recommend that, you know, we get those both in writing from, from the developer. Regarding the cistern, I know the chief had sent a letter, and certainly the chief can speak to this if you'd like, sent a letter with his understanding on the scope, and it was an either-or approach. It was one cistern with some equipment or two cisterns. I won't get into the specifics as to the distinction between the two, but there was an either-or approach, and we're waiting for feedback from the developer on that also.
Can I just also add that once we get these designs exactly where the chief is happy and you're happy and the developer's happy, because it's tied into some other provisions relating to the booster pump and some other elements and that measure when occupancy permits get issued, it's important that, once you get that design in, that we have, we go through this exercise again of, of change for insubstantial purposes or otherwise, so that you have a measuring stick, the board has a measuring stick, Larry has a measuring stick for issuing a building and occupancy permit. So, once these designs come in, we'll be back, I suspect, for what would hopefully be an insubstantial change if the chief is satisfied with the design and can move forward, so that, so that the procedures for issuing occupancy going forward make sense.
I have your conversation, Jay, reference to Larry. Do we not have a, a-
Independent.
Independent inspector at this point?
That's what we had talked about.
We do for the subdivision part.
Okay.
Oh, you, you mean for the building permits? No, as a matter of fact, we're working on that. Larry's got me a defined scope of work, and we're going to put that out to bid to several firms, so we are moving forward on that. One last thing, I did want to point out from the board's information, the board had previously authorized a certain number of building permits being issued were at that lim, or occupancy, I'm sorry. Occupancy permits being issued were at that limit now, so I just wanted the board to be aware of that.
Yeah, I would like to ask for a lot more occupancy.
Mike?
While we're still on the cistern, what's the typical timeframe for something like this to get completed?
Well, the lead time, the lead time between when they place the order and the actual product gets manufactured and delivered to the site is the holdup, and I'm not sure, Tim, what is the lead time on that?
Lead time's roughly eight weeks, and we're just waiting on the design to be complete and approved, obviously, before we order.
So, eight weeks. It should be in, before the ground freezes?
Yeah, it should be, yeah. But even if we went into winter, we'd dig just like we can in the winter, and we would dig and put it in the ground.
My goal is, I want to make sure this keeps progressing, okay? I know the engineer had requested some data, the test pit information, and, you know, there was, there was communication today about that, and that was requested several weeks ago, so if something's lagging, I'm relying on the developer to, to make sure that's being pursued. The only reason I inquired about it today was because we were having a meeting tonight, and so-
That information was sent over a few weeks ago with the CAD file. Gina just didn't see it in the CAD file. And I don't know if she's happy-
I'm just encouraging you to be proactive, Tim.
Absolutely.
So that we're not waiting till winter, and then we can't put it in.
Yeah, I agree. I want to purchase into the ground.
Go ahead, Chuck. The, the units that you want the occupancy permits for, are they already the larger units with the, with the, with the additional garage?
Yes, they are. Yeah.
So, those are already constructed?
Yes.
And those are the occupancy permits that you're looking for?
Correct.
Mike?
Tim just had made a statement, he was asking for five permits. When they were in last time, they asked for five, we gave three. Two, five would have brought them into October, so now we're back up to five again. I'm just curious as to why we're back at that number, Tim?
Well, we have some that are going to go into November, and it'll be into November before we, if we order the cistern tomorrow, before it's in the ground. So, just, just asking.
Chief, do you want to join us?
Sure.
Look, for some report from you, how you feel about some of these occupancy permits without the adequate fire protection?
I'm fine as long as, as long as we're moving forward and we have a plan and a process, as Bill and the document and this stuff, and town council's on board. We're used to fighting fires out of the water district if we have them and using tanker shuttles. The cistern is a concept where we have hydrants up there, there is water up there going in. There's hydrants in prior, prior to the beginning of each phase, so that's something that's required. There has to be water there. I feel that if a fire's going to happen, oftentimes it could happen under construction because you have a lot of stuff going on. So, there's hydrants there, it's just that they weren't able to meet with the water lines and whatnot, the 750 gallons per minute. I think, I believe it was the ISO was looking for, based on NFPA and whatnot. So, that's why we went with the cistern, because it will actually give us 30,000 gallons of water there. And we talked about hose and appliances. Right now, our, the hose we have is four-inch hose. You can, you can push four-inch hose if you, if, from, from a truck, about 800 feet. NFPA allows, with 1142, which is rural firefighting specifications that the cistern is built by, it allows a building to be as far as 22, 200, 2200 feet away. The furthest one is about 12. But once you get to 800, you start to lose your ability because of the friction loss of the hose. So, our, our, our fix for that, four-inch hose pushes, you can push efficiently 1,000 gallons a minute through it. Five-inch, you can push it, you can push 2,000 gallons of water through it. So, it's a big upgrade, you're able to move more water with a lot less friction loss because it's a bigger, it's a bigger hose. It's not as restrictive. So, that's the reason we want to go with upgrading hose and also having 30,000 gallons of water to add to the 440 gallons a minute that those hydrants are tested for up there. So, I'm comfortable with that, just because that's what we do already. But we met last night, we're planning, but we want to start seeing, seeing maybe cisterns go in places, so that we're being proactive, and we're not, you know, because when you put cisterns in, it keeps the ISO rating down for your insurance as well, because you have, you have a solution. It's considered a hydrant, really.
So, the question is, is the hose cost going to be part of the project?
That's what we talked about. I'll leave that.
Yeah, we, I think we agreed on upgrading the hose and doing one cistern in the location by the pump station.
My concern would be that we-
We talked about holes and attachments, intake valves and things like that, and there was a cost to that, and we gave them a cost to that, and we priced it out. And we feel that it will not only help us there, but it'll help us all around town to be able to move water efficiently as well. So, basically, it's helping the town out.
But we're four-inch around all around town?
We're four-inch right now. We would have to, we would convert over to five.
So, the five inches is for this one project.
But we'd be able to push water further distances with, with less restriction, so it would really help us out on firefighting capacities and water supply.
Eventually.
Correct.
Anybody have any questions, such as chief?
No, I'm good.
All right. Bill, did you have anything else you want to discuss?
I'll set with me then.
Yep, we have. Appreciate it, chief. So, I think our intent was to continue to do these monthly updates, so.
So, really, the only thing pending would be the request for permits, right?
Do you have closing prior to the next meeting?
Yes, we do. No, not prior to the next meeting, but right after that, we do, yes. Is that right?
Second week of-
October 10.
What's the anticipated date to wrap up the, the design and some of these other mitigation items regarding the hose? Is there, is there a best guess on that?
That's what I'm trying to nail down. I got an email from Gina today, she can give me a definitive answer.
I mean, I'm not suggesting that anyone slow down, slow down a process to get moving, but it sure would be good to have some of this stuff nailed down, so that the board would have something committed to, to kind of, by way of an amendment to the decision to, so we can get into a more even flow of these, of these occupancy permits, rather than just, I mean, I take it on full faith that these things are moving forward and that there's been progress, but it's, it's obviously a decent-sized ask of the board.
It is, because originally it was six, and now if five more are approved, it'll be eight more than the original six, which is significant. Mike?
I would think that if, if we granted the additional two that they had asked for at the last time, that brings them into October. She's already said that the other ones want to be in for November anyways. That gives them the opportunity from now until October 10, they get Gina on board and get your design, get the information that Bill needs. Obviously, you're moving forward, you're putting effort into it and giving us the things that we're, we're looking for. Hopefully, we hope to have them completed by now, but that's okay. But I think, in all fairness, if we give the two additional permits, that keeps them moving, but also keeps them motivated to get the information that we're going to need.
That would, I'd be very happy with that.
I think that's a fair-
I'm not trying to stop them.
No, no, nobody is.
Keep them going, but at the same time.
Absolutely. We got to make the sales, get the money, to help you.
I would say then, Tim, along those lines, in addition to asking for an additional three at the next meeting, if we have, if you're there with the design with the, with the chief and with Bill on this, presented by way of, of a- the chief and with Bill on this, present it by way of, of a project change, so we can get rid of all that old booster pump language and have a new mechanism for, for when you're getting your occupancy permit, so we can then go towards, you know, construction of this stuff, and have a new measuring stick for the next group of occupancy permits, so you don't have to come in every month and, and ask for further relief. So, just keep an eye on the clock, like a week or two out from the, the next meeting before the agenda is set, so that the, the board can have that info, and then, you know, maybe, maybe we could have more permanent solution, rather than a week, month-to-month solution.
Bill? Yeah, I just want to reiterate the fact that I'd like to nail down, with, with the lead time being two months for, for the tank, I'd like to nail down that construction issue with, with the engineer, so that we can be assured that everybody's in agreement with the scope, and we're not haggling over that two months from now.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's what I was going to add, is along with what Jay was saying, a footed design, I would like to have a better idea of the schedule by next meeting, yeah?
Yeah. Yep, that'd be fine.
I think your suggestion is fair compromise, keeps them going, but keeps them motivated, as you said. So, is that a motion?
Yes.
They have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to create two additional occupancy permits to Brown North, Brown Village, North Village.
I'll second it.
Can we amend that motion, we may as well kill two birds with one stone, and add to the motion to issue a written approval of the, of the request for the design changes, subject to the condition that the engineering and the, the unit design, the setbacks, be verified by and between the applicant and, and Bill?
So, moved.
Okay.
And I'll write that up for your signature, Dan.
Great, thank you. All right, any further discussion? All in favor of issuing two additional occupancy permits? If I must say, aye? Aye? Opposed?
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
The next agenda item is continued public hearing for Louis Tassino, case number 2018-09103 Shore Drive. Mr. Shugley, try us?
Thank you.
I'll share.
Bye, thanks.
We have counsel with us, so we can...
Ready? Oh, is that?
Yes.
Chairman, members of the board, we're here again on 103 Shore Road, seeking a variance for the lot and the house that's been built on there for several years now. And it's a new application, in the sense that we're relying on the recent decision of the land court in 2016, which said that a, a lot can use the private way, if it owns the way, to accomplish the requirements for size of the lot and, and frontage. And certainly, we own Shore Road, we're on Shore Road, and we say that Shore Road covers us in terms of those two items. So, that really, the only thing that we'd be seeking would be, as I understand, a side, I believe it's sidelined, and front yard setback and side yard setback, which I believe this board has commonly, in that area, granted variances for those uses. In addition to that, for some of the history on, on this particular lot, previously, when you changed your bylaw and basically eliminated this lot in 2004, you allowed a five-year, or the town allowed a five-year lookback. So, it put us in 2009. As you know, the permit that we used, that we had obtained from the building department was issued in 2008, so that that came, that seeking of that permit initially came in a, in a year, in a, in a year that was grandfathered for that purpose. So, it's not like we're doing, trying to do anything that's not been out there before, but we haven't argued those points before. So, I, at this time, I would, I would ask you to reconsider your previous rulings, and ask you that you grant the, you grant the variance, because we say now we meet the size requirement, we meet the frontage requirement, and that I think there's legislation, but there's precedence in the court, it was the land court, by the way, that made that decision in 2000, in 2016, which certainly is well after we started our litigation. So, frankly, that's our position.
Jay, did you have some?
I, I don't, I don't agree with that interpretation of, of that case. I don't think that they can use any portion of Shore Road to satisfy a lot area requirement or to expand the, the deficient frontage in, in any way. I, I think the application should be considered under the normal criteria applicable to variances, in the same way you considered those, I mean, you should, you should feel free to make the decision that you like, but you applied those criteria when you were examining the original application. I don't see anything that has changed in the law that would change the way you look at this, under those criteria.
Board members have any questions, comments?
Can I ask a question of the building inspector?
Sure.
Mr. Inspector, there was a document that I received in my email about possible litigation that was being brought against you, some kind of an act of mandamus to compel you to take some action or some non-action on this case, or did I completely misunderstand the emailing that went out?
There is, I can answer that too. I mean, there is action by the neighbor, but brought by, not by my client. We were not, in fact, we have fought that action, and we're still fighting that action.
But, I just want, but that was direct, that's an actual lawsuit directed at the building inspector, to fulfill what the, the moving party perceives as his legal obligations in terms of actively tearing down that building.
Sean, so let me just jump in there just a tiny bit with the request, and I believe Mr. Lane is here too. The request was to compel the, the tear down of the building after all of the other remedies were exhausted, and while we did not second-guess the underlying order to tear down, what we did object to was any notion that the town could be compelled to spend its monies on that tear down. The court agreed with us there. There's no request, the present request before, that's still kind of lingering in the, in the appellate process, has nothing to do with trying to compel the town to tear down anything. It is all by and between the neighbor and Mr. Tassino, where the neighbor's trying to compel...
But it seems to name Mr. Lynch as a, Lynch, I apologize, it's horrible, I don't know your name, sir, as, as, as the party, that is, the action was being brought against.
Well, we were a party in the original action, and the parties don't change, obviously, so, but, but we successfully, the, the judgment in the lower court was that the town can't be compelled.
I guess, the document I read seemed to suggest otherwise, that was what caused concern.
There is no, no, the judgment specifically states that we cannot be compelled, and that issue isn't on, on appeal.
Do you know the document that I'm talking about, that was distributed by Maria to the board, I'd say sometime within the last month, month and a half?
I, I'm not sure which document you're talking about, but there is no court decision or, or court case that I'm aware of, that I've been provided, where that would stand for the proposition that the town can be compelled to expend their resources on the demolition.
Might there be a court case about that?
You need to be recognized before, you can't just speak, oh man. If you'd like to speak, just, need your name and address?
I'm sorry, my name's Dean Lawrence, from 119 Shore Road, and I thought the other gentleman was saying there might be a recent court case, and I thought that the neighbor involved had told me there was, but I might, I might be wrong, but anyway, so I, I had information that seemed to fit with what he was saying, from, from the neighbor involved.
Mr. Tassino?
Yes, I have here, this has been approved. This was a, this was, you people passed this. It was a thing for, one foot. Pass that around, please.
I don't understand what this, what about...
It's to make a lot. What the, what the person did was, they got one foot, and they said it was a lot, and you people approved it.
But they're not using the road for, for, they're using their own...
Well, the road is the fact that I own it.
Right, they're using their own land.
Right, but I own the road, and I have a deed for it, I own it, and...
Do you maintain it?
Huh?
Do you maintain it?
Yes. Main, main fact, we do some drainage work up there, we caught someone laying some pipes across the road, we had a town, we got, sent them a letter saying we're going to dig up the pipes. They think they can drain a lot into the pond, okay? But it's the same difference, I own the road. As a matter of fact...
What did he say?
That's in Douglas, right here.
That's something that he's claiming that we approved already.
You approved it.
When, when was this approved?
Several years ago, there was a...
I was going to say, it had to be before 2013.
No, before you, before you. Now, now the...
Let's, you know what, you should come put this up here to anybody that's interested in this case.
Want to take the first page off, Deb? Just roll it back. Okay, now, it's right there, that, that's the, that's my property right there. I own Shore Road, and I own Birch Hill Terrace.
12 acres, with 95 feet of frontage. So, he has the deed to this, and he has the deed to his parcel that borders Wollam Lake. And the lot on Wollam Lake is unique, because it's located in a district that is unique from other areas in town. There's different specifications that are required for lots that border the lake. So, that's what makes this lot unique, and it also, the lot should be protected from increases in the zoning, because the zoning bylaws were repealed in October 25th of 2004, and you had a five-year bridging period, which his permit was, he got a building permit in 2008, and actually, the repeal period would have been over in 2009. So, he's within the, the time the town issued the permit. Now, obviously, it's in court, but the court keeps reprimanding us back here. If we can get it solved here, that solves the problem. And isn't this board supposed to help the neighbors try to solve these problems and get these issues rectified?
Just so I understand this, so now, 12 acres, this lot with the road is considered all one parcel?
You could consider it as, for purposes of zoning.
Is that what you're saying? Is that what you're telling me? If you want to look at it that way, you could. No, I'm asking you. I'm not looking at it, anyway, I'm trying to understand what you're telling me.
You told me, you told me I needed two acres, okay?
Okay.
That's what they said, you know, you've got to have two acres. Now, we just approved the guy who had, we, we've been approving the land...
I'm only asking a simple question, and I'm not following...
He said I needed, he said I needed two acres. I went out and got you 12 acres.
Okay.
Okay?
It was a special permit.
But, but I have a question for this, I'm asking this for a specific reason, okay? So, that road is part of that land now?
Yes, that's what we're saying.
So, then, you have another lot a couple houses down, that there's another structure on, correct?
No.
You don't own two, two lots, huh?
The other house.
Excuse me?
No, the beach house.
Oh, my house?
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand...
Oh, no, I don't have nothing near there.
Lou, you have 123.
Yeah, but that's down the road.
What he's saying...
I'm asking...
Oh, it's on Shore Road, yeah, it's maybe down, down 5, 8 houses.
So, my question is, is if, if Shore Road and Birch Hill and the, and the lot that were on the application, because a lot is non-conforming, it becomes contiguous with those other ones, doesn't that other lot do the same thing? Because it's a non-conforming lot, when under the same ownership, automatically become contiguous?
I think you could say there's 12 acres there, I don't know how far away that is.
I think the original issue here was, was not grandfathered, because it didn't, never had a building on it. It only had 47 feet of frontage, and 50 was required, and it had 4,800 square feet and 5,000 was required.
It has been determined by the court setters in the legal bill.
I mean, I recall sitting here for hours, trying to figure out how we could approve it, and it just...
What I was getting at is, if we're going to look at it that way, and that other lot that's, it's not a, it's contiguous, so it automatically becomes part of that, you can only have one house on a lot.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I just see what you're saying.
The argument goes in both directions, so I'm just making, I'm being clear of Shore Road in half, if that happens.
See, this is a new thing, this is, we came here thinking that you're going to help us out. Now, apparently, you've got one guy here that gets one foot of land from his neighbor, he gets 39 feet, and the other neighbor gives it a seldom party fee, and he gets one foot, right? One foot, and this board, this board approved it. Because, no, you wouldn't.
But he has adequate frontage.
Huh?
He does have adequate frontage.
And I do too, because I own the road. It says right on the thing, I own the road.
Jay, do you have, you are...
I don't even follow the argument as, as making any, I'm, I'm trying to be as open-minded as possible to the creative approach they have. We had looked at the case that he referenced, I, I just don't see it as applicable here. I just don't think that, looking at your zoning bylaws, that you can consider the, the road as part of his frontage or his lot area, as I read your zoning bylaws. Again, I think this, your review of this should distill back to whether or not you feel he can meet the general variance criteria with the, with a lot that has under 50 feet of lot area, of frontage, and under 5,000 square, square feet of lot area.
It never had a building on it, was an issue too, in the original...
That's right, if it had exceeded the 50 and 5,000, then it, then it's clear there would have been some grandfathering rights.
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, but you did give it to my neighbor. And what happened, let me explain this whole story. I went before the planner, I went before this zoning board, and the building inspector was there, the building commissioner, and she has a letter from, who was the other town council? Before you, Jay, who was the town council?
That's been, that's been litigated over and over, you know that?
Doesn't matter, let me explain what happened. Now...
Well, I think the court has explained what happened.
Well, no, they haven't.
Pretty quite clear.
We, we got a lot of courts to go through here, okay? Now, let me tell you, this is what happened. I go there, Adele said, nope, not giving you a building permit. The town council said, you have to give him a building permit, and gives her a letter saying, issue a building permit, which Mr. Tallman read, okay? And it says, issue him a building permit, and the town issued one. Now, this is what we're looking for, okay? Now, I feel I did nothing wrong. I got a building permit, I put up a building. The law usually is three months after you put up a building, 30 days, no one has no jurisdiction. Well, seven months later, seven months later, am I right? Seven months later, they appealed my building permit, okay? So, now, here I am. Now, what happens here is, is here, all I'm asking is, is here, okay? Someone has to pay for my damages. Now, Mr. Tallman seems to think that the town's scot-free. The town's not scot-free. Now, I was talking to the insurance company, and the insurance company said, the most we can pay you is $250,000.
How does this pertain to the board of...
No, no, no.
Let's focus on the issue.
Okay, so you guys have got to make it clear to me, because I've got to go back to court, I've got to make it clear, but I don't understand how, I don't get a, I didn't do nothing to get this building, I did nothing bad to get this, but this was given to me only because the town council was audited, the town commissioner was audited to.
If I'm not mistaken, the town, someone in the town, and I can't recall whether it was, someone told you to cease and desist in building that, before you had...
Before the foundation was...
Before the foundation, yeah.
No, no.
Never ceased and desisted.
Never ceased and desist, never.
So, they told you to stop, Louie.
No, we haven't got a cease and desist, I would say, for maybe three years later. No, we haven't got a cease and desist, I would say, for maybe three years later.
The other interesting part of that, you have a year to build a house if you have a building permit. So we were well into that when that building was pretty much up.
I know for a fact.
It was stopped, there's been basically nothing done in the interior, right?
No.
You, you were notified to stop building that.
Never, never. If you can show me a letter, I'm sorry for being here.
The board of council sent a letter to the building commissioner, if I recall.
But, but by that alone, does that stop us? And, and what if we get into, we don't continue? That's just notice that I'm gonna sue you. That's not a cease and desist.
That's playing with money, if you've, if you've got somebody that's serious about asking you to stop.
And what if we didn't finish it in a year, you could have stopped us when we were three quarters of the way done. We have an obligation to finish it in a year. We have an obligation to finish it in a year.
Mr. Lane sent the letter to the town, town, and the town went to the town council, and the town council said they, "No, you can't stop him from building that building."
Oh, okay.
Now, we don't care about that, because this doesn't involve this. All this does is make my case, my case better for a suit against the town. I don't wanna do that. Now, I think that you've given a lot of, you know, you've given a lot of relief for a lot of people up there lately, lately, you have. I mean, we're just standing here, maybe a month ago, two months ago, and Mr. Tallman was here with Mr. Lane, and Mr. Lane said, Mr. Tallman said, "Oh, I got my papers in the office that that guy, yeah, you, you'll be okay, I'm gonna give you something." And you let a guy build on a five-thousand-square-foot lot with no variances. You just went to the building inspector, say, "Hey, issue the building permit." And he did it, okay?
It was a completely, the facts were completely different than yours.
How were they different?
Totally different.
How were they different, Mike?
I don't know, I got a question.
Go ahead.
Um, the last meeting, I asked you about the, uh, this house, how we could even handle the case if it's already been decided on. And you said it was a catch-22, so do you have anything to...
Well, as I say, the, the case is still proceeding and, and in a, in essence, the appeals court's up there to decide what's gonna happen.
Yeah, the confusing part that I have, it, it would be the same situation as if, if we denied something and Larry turned around and just issued the permit anyways, because it's a due process. You stop with Larry, you come to us, you, you go on. And I don't understand, I just can't get my head around how I can turn around and overrule what the judges are already...
You can come back to the zoning board of appeals every two years.
Every two years, oh wait a minute, every two years on that parcel of land, from release on that parcel, but the structure has already been decided on, and that's what I had said to you last time. And I, I, I don't understand how we could overrule a decision on that structure.
If, if, well, I, I think, no, I don't think you'd be overruling it, you'd be making a new decision, we would take that into the judge's, judge's out of your hands, dismiss the case.
Lou? Now, we did this here a month ago. You took a person that came here for variance, and you sent them out the room, and you sent them to Larry, you told Larry, "Issue the permit." And he issued a permit.
The situation, Lou, we're gonna, not gonna talk about that anymore, because that's a completely different situation.
How is it, same kind of lot? Five thousand square, he had a five thousand square foot lot.
Completely different situation.
I got a six...
Totally different with ownership and center of the center.
He didn't have any ownership. He had it nineteen, nineteen ninety-eight. What are you talking about?
Yeah, I would hope that if you, you found in favor, decided to give it to us, we go back, go into the land court and say, "Judge, would you reconsider your decision?" And toss them.
That's all, it's not, you know...
That's all, that's all we have.
You think we should get reconsidered? That's what I'm asking this board. If you don't wanna give me that, it's okay, we end up back in court and we start all over again. And you're happy with that, right, Pam?
I, I just...
That's okay.
I'm telling you, I remember sitting here for diligently looking at that case, and there was nothing that we could do.
What are you talking about?
John was here.
He voted for it. He said, "Yes, let's give it to him." What are you talking about?
The other thing I would say to you is...
It was a special permit.
Take a look at your decision in the case next door and, and, and look at all, for the, all the reasons that you backed up and said, you know, why you allowed it, and then apply it to what you said in our case, same factors, and found completely...
Totally different.
So what I can do then, what you're telling me, is I can go up now, we gotta go to district court, and we can file, we can file papers against all the people that you gave decisions to.
What you, Lou, we're not here to discuss that. Whatever you decide to do legally with your counsel, that's fine, okay? But don't sit here and threaten, you're gonna sue neighbors, you're gonna do it. That has, that's not what we're here for, Lou.
Well, that's what happened to me. That's what happened to me, Dan.
And you lost in court multiple times.
Listen, I won as many times as I lost.
I didn't see any...
I think we should make a decision now, because this is getting out of hand.
I agree.
Thank you.
All right, heard where council feels, where he stands on this.
Jay, will you make a decision on this, please?
Should be asked from the audience.
So, yeah, I mean, before you, obviously, take some public comment where, where you need to, but again, just to remind the board of the criteria under, under the variance, that the key criteria that you would have to find to grant a variance is, is that there's some unique condition relating to the size, shape, or topography of the lot that is not shared by other lots in the, um...
And we have that.
In the, in the district. And owing to that, that there's some hardship, and not self-created hardship, but hardship here. If there, the, the courts have found that if it's a normal-sized lot in an area where there's a lot of other normal-sized rectangular lots, that is not in and of itself unique. The fact that a lot is undersized does not make it unique. The lot has to be some kind of, have some kind of unique attributes on its shape or topography, or, or something else like that to, to really qualify for that. Now, the variance standard is incredibly difficult. Boards sometimes grant variances regardless of it. They're almost impossible to uphold, and I, I feel for any applicant for a variance because it is almost impossible. That said, this board has found once, and the court has upheld that, that this did not meet the, the criteria. Are you free to change your mind? You are free to change your mind. Would it hold up in court upon a challenge from a neighbor or anyone else who had standing? Probably not. So, that, that's, that's the standard.
If I could add one thing about the hardship, the hardship to this lot was created because the state took the land next to it by eminent domain, and that helped to create this.
Okay. Does anybody else in the room want to speak?
Well, I have a question about the deed.
We just need time.
Oh, my name is Kate, I live at one-twenty-seven Shore Road, last name Bain, B-A-I-N. I had a question about the master deed and the owning of the road. Does anybody have a book and page, any information on that, so I can have clarity? Because I'm concerned about that.
It's right there on the page, thank you.
The book and page is over there?
Yep, just copy it down.
All right, thank you.
Welcome. Ma'am?
So Jean Lawrence, one-one-nine Shore Road, um, so I, I don't actually understand all of the ramifications, but, and I realize there's a long course to here, and you all wanna be done with this, I get that. But is it a new piece of information that he owns the road? And I, I live on the road, I bought a house there, and now I'm like, yikes, somebody else owns my road. And they're ticked. And so I, I would like just to say, I really appreciate the work of the zoning board, and nowhere does it seem more needed than in the little, very special Shore Road that butts Wallem Lake. There's multiple issues arising there now, and it, it might be a good idea to have, like, a little more open discussion with more of the neighbors, and maybe we could try to figure out how to fix this in a way that's sustaining. I'm just, well, because if, if you own the road, can I ride on the road?
Yep, says you can.
Yes, you can.
And, you know, there is an issue about maintenance of the road, not just fixing the potters, but like really maintaining it, and I don't know, maybe you do a little bit, but it might be more needed, so I just don't know whether there's, that does strike me as a unique piece of information.
Yes, I bought the whole, I bought the whole community when I bought it.
My concern, I was kind of, to be honest, glad that you denied his request when I bought my house, because I don't want the area developed. But there's not too many people that own the road.
Do you have anything specific to his lot? Cause he's here for a variance?
Yeah.
And the, the road, the conditions of the road, the maintenance of the road is a completely separate issue, and you may wanna discuss it with Mr. Tassino if he owns the road, but this isn't the forum for that.
Thank you, though.
Mr. Jimmy, can I just make a suggestion?
Sure.
For clarity for this lady and probably people that live there. And there is a Wallem Lake homeowners association, is there not?
Well, actually, they're, they're a Birch Hill Association, I'm a member, but we actually recently have a number of neighbors who live right on the lake that are, are starting to form an association that has not existed, and, and they would like to meet with one or more members of the zoning board to discuss this.
I, I would suggest, first of all, that you get organized, find, find, you can probably find a, a time to meet in the municipal room there, and, and get together and figure out what kind of questions and, that you want, and then, um, put a, put a request in to the town, to the board of selectmen's office, and they can get the appropriate people there to help you. Okay.
So anybody else wants to speak?
Pam Dix, I live on Roslyn Road up the Wallem Lake Terrace. We do have a beach association, Wallem Lake Terrace Beach Association. We all pay X amount of dollars for our...
Is anybody else who wants to speak before we close the public hearing?
Okay. Are we done with this? Just a question.
Yeah, the town council's saying that the application's no different than the previous one. Although they're, I mean, they're saying that they own the road and so forth, but...
So there's new information which allows them to come to us, to come back.
They, they could come, they don't need new information, they could come back with the exact same information every two years. They don't have to change a thing, they are free to do that.
And now, if we do get, question please, if we get denied tonight, we just, get me or whatever, send me a letter, and then we take that letter back to court, am I right, Kate?
You, you have the right to appeal.
Right, I have a right to appeal.
I make the motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mrs. Holmes to close the public hearing for case number two-zero-one-eight-dash-zero-nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, did you, close the hearing, no, no, okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say something, cause I intend to vote the last time, the exact same way that I did the last time, which is to say, I think the statute allows the term "structure" to factor into a variance. I think that this building was built with the permission and license of the building inspector. It is my belief that the building inspector was never sanctioned, her termination was never, her appointment was never terminated, she remained for many years co, uh, the building inspector, in fact, I believe, went on to a higher business and worked for the state. So I would suggest there is something unique about this lot, which is that this structure was built under legitimate, or at least what would reasonably be perceived a legitimate building permit, and I would suggest the statute, again, uses that language, not just the topography, not just the shape, but also the structure language, so I would approve the variance as I suggested when we first did this hearing, that it should be approved for that reason, because the structure was created, but after, in essence, government permission was given. Whether it was flawed is, I would suggest, is certainly material, but there was government position given, permission given, and there seemed to be some legitimate chain of government position where some people believed that the appropriate governmental authorities were allowing it.
Okay. So, um, voting on this case would be Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mrs. Holmes, myself, Mr. Holland, and Mr. Bombara. So, everybody to vote? Okay, we just need a motion or...
I'll make the motion that we approve the zoning bylaws, the change for, for Tassino, case number two-zero-one-eight-dash-zero-nine.
Your motion is to approve the variance.
The variance, sorry.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the variance request is denied.
Dan, can, can I have the board, just for the sake of, of helping to write the decision, if it's, if it's the same reasons as in the prior decision, I can incorporate them, but if, I, I'd like the board to have some findings as to whether or not it finds any unique, um, shape or other conditions that would justify the issuance of a variance, or, or say in the negative, that it does not meet the unique criteria under the standards. That way, that'll help me.
Okay.
I'd like you to specifically make a, a finding there.
Okay.
And you feel free to incorporate what the findings from the, the prior decision too, because I think it's laid out in there as well.
We'll do that later.
Yeah, we'll do that. Yeah, we'll, we'll get that to you.
Okay. But, but what I'd like the board to do is actually vote, say, make a motion, or make a, vote to make a finding that it doesn't meet the applicable variance criteria as previously found by the board. That way, it's on the record in your minutes that, that you, that was your rationale for denying the variance.
We had the same, use the same criteria that held in court.
I, I don't, oh, actually, I don't have the, have it before us.
Yeah, I don't have it before us either.
But, um, which is unfortunate, and probably should, isn't it? Maria, do we have the whole file on this accessible?
I have one, I have one if you need one.
You do?
I'll be glad to give you one. I know I wasn't gonna get you, Lou, that's okay. Don't misunderstand me, we're gonna have a lot of fun with this.
Well, it wouldn't be this.
Right, Jake? I made a lot of money on a time like this one.
I have not made an extra nickel at all from any of this.
You didn't?
Not the way I get paid.
It's not a continuing file?
No kidding.
No. They give different numbers every time they come out.
No, okay.
Maria, could you just, um, maybe email a copy of the, the decision to all the members?
Sure.
We have, we have until the twenty-eighth to file a decision.
Okay, so is Jay saying we don't need to take a...
Well, if you take the vote, and it's the necessary vote, then, then it's fine, and I'll just get it to you for your signature, Dan.
So, the board of...
I would move that the board finds that the lot did not meet the shape, size, topography, or soil condition requirements of, of, required for a variance.
Perfect, that, that's terrific, yes.
Along with whatever was written on the last decision.
Right.
I think that's what was written.
Perfect, yes, I believe it was.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Holland, seconded by Mrs. Holmes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the, uh, next case is, uh, case number two-zero-one-eight-dash-one-two, it's a continued public hearing for Robert and Irene Miller, one-fifteen Shore Road, the application is for a special permit. We're gonna take a two-minute recess.
I'm counting.
I apologize.
I'm counting.
What's going?
Are you a whole new crew?
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sorry, Lou.
It is indeed.
Yeah, I, you know, I set the damn weather.
I'm wearing shorts and I'm still sweating.
I put this on because it was cool. Because it was cooler than it was.
It's all this height and extra. It's okay, it's a lot.
Ah, so you have.
All right, we have the applicant with us now, so.
Yeah, sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
Do we have to excuse themselves?
You do.
You do.
Good call. And folks, we need to quieten here, please.
Yep.
So what do we got for after this? Do I have to excuse myself in the next one, Dave?
Yep.
Then you can come back for the next one, then you got to leave again.
Yeah, right.
You talk to Maria about how she schedules this stuff.
The board.
I want to introduce you to my design engineer, Raoul, and also my architect, Dave Crum. And he's the one that has done the design. The last meeting, you requested, you requested to see what the building was going to look like, and Dave has gone in and basically designed the entire building, and that's what you have in front of you.
I think the last item was, you needed to know what the elevation, the building elevation in the front and the back, just to make sure we don't exceed the maximum height.
Right.
And that's on the, on the calendar.
Okay.
And just to refresh your memory from the last meeting, what we're looking at doing is moving the property into the center of the lot. So we're basically requesting a 15-foot offset. Right now, we're 10 feet to the next door neighbor, and we'll be moving the house over 15 feet. So it gives her more privacy. And we also designed the deck so that we're not overlooking her property, and it cuts down the noise and conversations that we're having. So the deck, the way it's designed, creates wings where our voices project out over the water, as opposed to the way it is now. It projects right across into her backyard. So it gives both my neighbors more privacy in terms of, you know, conversations when we're sitting on the deck or doing something of that nature.
One of the things I see, it has overall length, but it appears that the depth of the building, the measurement doesn't include a portion of the back porch. You see, it says 42 feet, but 42 feet is to the far end of the angle bay, and the deck protrudes further. The purpose of this, we want to give something to the building commissioner that he can enforce.
Right. So the deck extends four feet beyond the back of the house, is that your question?
Yeah, I don't know what that measurement is, but it's.
Yeah, it's four feet.
Yeah, Dan, he's showing, showing the deck and the, uh, proposed plot plan.
It's on the plan, that was.
So my calculations are right, the overall footprint is about 68 by 50. Is that correct?
Correct. Now, the structure, I mean, there's a ramp out in the front, that's not part of it.
Right, but it's part of the structure. Deck's porches are included in the setbacks.
Yeah, and the other portion of that.
Is that plot plan submitted last month, or is that one too?
Yeah, that was last month. Unless it's updated. It's the same one. Here's the one he brought today.
It's the same one.
Okay.
Yeah, the reason we have a handicap ramp in the front, last week, my wife broke her ankle going down a small set of stairs, and what happened is it twisted and actually broke in two places. So my next-door neighbor is also handicapped, and it'd be nice to be able to invite him over.
Aren't you nice?
Actually, he's, he's actually very nice. Dot and they, he's had multiple sclerosis for a number of years, and this would allow him to come in, and he really enjoys looking at these types of projects. A very nice individual.
Yes.
But my, we're 65 and trying to design an aging process home, and when my wife broke her ankle last Wednesday, had a hard time getting her out of the cottage because we had stairs to go down, and with a broken ankle, it was almost extremely difficult.
So she didn't adapt when you were down near them? You were down, you were down at the lake.
Right. And she didn't want me to call the ambulance, so we end up hobbling out, and it was, it was a disaster. So having the ramp in the front of the house, it's basically secluded by a stone wall and also a little deck area, but that's actually a ramp from the driveway all the way up to the front door. It's continuous.
I see, just outside the 50-foot wetlands buffer zone. Have you been to conservation?
Yes. Raoul has hand-built conservation.
And a half, he's got 23, yeah.
Is everything else good? It's 16, 15.
Yeah, that's a good eye.
Oh, Mike caught it. I'm not going to take the credit.
Good eye.
I'll take that one.
It's just, it's what the landing is.
Right, counsel.
In your application, you have a 24 and a half foot setback from the rule, but on your plan, 23.
No, this is existing, for the existing house. We show the existing, the existing house to be removed, the darker.
Oh, okay, all right. The dark one's on.
We have to show existing.
I see.
We tried.
We got it, so that's good.
Slapped him down.
I had to slap him down. Wasn't a good call. Good thing I didn't take that one.
Don't worry, I get it.
So, you know, the, we've been in the property a number of years, probably five to, five to eight years, and, you know, we looked at basically saving the existing structure, but part of the problem is, there've been so many electricians in there that it's electrically haunted, but they also tried putting a foundation underneath the A-frame, and they were not able to put it in properly. They put concrete blocks on top of the existing ground, so what happens is, it heaves up in the winter, you know, a small amount, and then in the summer, it settles back down, simply because they're not four feet below the frost. It's right on the surface of the ground. And that was one of the reasons for deciding that it was time for the cottage to go, because it is very cute. It was built in the 60s, but there's no way we could take and modify it to make it a year-round. There's single-pane windows, limited insulation. It has some beautiful skylights on the south side, but back in the 60s, they didn't have design.
We want to focus on what you're proposing, not what's there.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
So, Mike, you're talking about, excuse me, Mr. Jim, and Mike just pointed out something else. This is a deck that's in front?
Handicap ramp.
Handicap ramp that he said he just added a few days ago because of the situation. So how's that affect our application? Did we consider that as part of it?
Yeah, I mean, the ramp is a structure, part of a structure.
Is it going to be a permanent thing or a temporary thing?
No, I would like to keep it permanently, because as I get older, I mean, I was the one that thought I would need it because of my balance issues. But, you know, I consider it a walkway as opposed to part of the structure. Now, if we have to eliminate it, we certainly could, but I'd prefer not to.
All right, you have some? Ben, my standard operating practice to allow handicap ramps into setbacks.
I'm sorry.
All right. Hello?
All right. I'm confused. You guys know I'm always confused. It's 68 feet long, and how wide is it?
50.
50.
50 feet wide?
Deep.
Yeah, wide. So it's 68 by 50. How many square feet is that? Why don't you put that on a calculator?
2022.
The first floor is.
50 by 70 is 3,500.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't know, if I didn't go to that school, and maybe you went to a different school than me, but that's not. 2,000. Would you please put that on the calculator, somebody?
Well, 50 by 70 is 3,500, so it's 3,400, thereabouts.
Yeah, but he says it's 22,200.
That's on the, the first floor. Yeah, he has each floor spelled out.
Yeah, there's two of them right there. It's 2200 on the first, 2228 on the first floor, and 1280 on the second floor.
Right.
Yes.
Oh, but I've got. This must be old.
Yes, that must be old.
Yeah, I don't see, this is much.
Yep.
So this is the exact home that you're proposing to build?
Yes. This has been in the thought process for a number of years, and in the last four months, we've hired Dave to come up with an aging-in-place home design. Our intent is to live on the first floor, and my two grandchildren will end up with one bedroom each. I have a girl and a boy. And the third bedroom, the fourth bedroom would actually be for guests. I have friends and associates that come in from around the country.
What's that? Ben?
Could you clarify?
You need to tell us who you are.
I'm Dr. Jean Lawrence. I live 119 Shore Road. And I came last time just because I was curious. I bought a house there about four years ago. I might want to do a little bit, and I was trying to figure out how this works. And at the end of the meeting, someone handed me the plan for the house, and I think I and the other neighbors are just very not understanding how you could possibly expand the house that much. It seems like a complete abrogation of the rules regarding the foundation and all the issues about impervious surfaces and changing the neighborhood and changing the flow of water. So we don't understand why you're talking about other smaller things when the foundation is going to be enormously expanded. And rough ballpark, it's the equivalent of putting another house there the size of the house that Mr. Tassino wants to put on the lot up the way. So anyway, if you could explain how this works, because it seems like.
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that. Basically, when the original architect designed the house, he had purchased two lots, and he was the only one that was allowed two lots on the whole Massachusetts side. Since that time, I believe there's one other lot that has two house lots. And that is the reason why we're able to take and expand it.
But it goes against, you can vary the rule about the foundation because you don't have two ways, so it's not conforming structure.
Right, we're asking for a special permit and basically requesting that we move the house away from Madeline's and 15 feet off of each boundary. Right now, where you have a single lot, 50 by 100, very, very difficult to build something with, you know, 15-foot offsets on each side, that's 30 feet. That only leaves you 20 feet to do your building.
But the 15 feet offset is only one of the regulations. The other regulation is the size of the house and not expanding the footprint. And if this is allowed, we want to understand, A, the fairness to neighbors in the past that weren't allowed, and B, the ramifications, the precedent it sets for all the other lots.
This is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, the pre-existing non-conforming home. So the applicant, any applicant is free to propose whatever they'd like. That doesn't mean that it can't approve, but they are, they are free to submit anything that they like, would like to do. So, Mike?
Getting back to the setback. The, I add, I just asked the architect about this roof here.
Mm-hmm.
As how far it projects out, because I'm trying to understand the plan. If you look at the side elevation, you don't see it sticking out past, you can see the roof back here. So he told me that it was flush with the front of the house. He has, actually has a foundation plan somewhere that he can show you, that he has, the roof is going to be flush with the front of the house, with the recess doorway. But the railing, looking at this front elevation, this railing is coming, comes out to the corner of the house. If you look at, three, four, five pages in, which is the first floor plan, shows the railing and the stairs are out past that, so it's, I'm just trying to understand how this setback is going to work for the front, where he's asking for 24 and a half feet, and everything is out past the bump outs where the 24 and a half feet was referred to. So that would be my question.
Well, Dave, could we pull that back?
Sure, we can bring it in line with it.
A little bit? In line with the furniture of the house?
That's, that's our issue.
And the only reason I keep asking that is because of the way it was advertised.
Sure.
You applied for 24 and a half feet, and this is clearly out. Maybe one, two inches. Because this is drawn as a 2x6 wall, it's about closest deck. So if we scale it, it's a foot.
Yeah.
So we could certainly bring that back.
That can.
But I think you need to be clear whether or not they have to include the step porch or whatever in their setback, if that's what the requirement is.
Larry said a handicap ramp, in his opinion, is allowed within the setback, but a permit is.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the ramp at all.
Right.
Just the, yeah, just the deck.
Now, we would agree to pull that back so it's flush with the front of the house. Rail.
My name is Mathen Myers. I'm just Miller's neighbor. I live in a little cottage that my father built in the 50s. Mr. Lambert was the original owner of that A-frame.
Hey, guys, we have, somebody else has a floor.
And I want to know, Mr. Miller put up a wall, like, near my property, on his, right. Now, is that wall, is that where the house is going to be that high, or is it going to be higher than that? That's what I want to know. We have no, I have no idea. That doesn't mean that it can't approve, but they are, they are free to submit anything that they like, would like to do. So, so. Mike?
Getting back to the setback, the, I add, I just asked the architect about this roof here.
Mm-hmm.
As how far it projects out, because I'm trying to understand the plans. If you look at the side elevation, you don't see it sticking out past, you can see the roof back here. So he told me that it was flush with the front of the house. He has, actually has a foundation plan somewhere that he can show you. That he has, the roof is going to be flush with the front of the house. With the recessed doorway. But the railing, looking at this front elevation, this railing is coming, comes out to the corner of the house. If you look at. Five pages in, which is the first floor plan, shows the railing and the stairs are out past that. So we're just trying to understand how this setback is going to work for the front. He's asking for twenty-four and a half feet, and everything is out past the bump outs where the twenty-four and a half feet was. Referred to. So that would be my question.
Well, Dave, could we pull that back?
Sure, we can bring it in line with it.
In line with the furniture of the house?
That's an issue.
And the only reason I keep asking that is because of the way it was advertised.
Sure.
You apply for twenty-four and a half feet, and this is clearly out. Because this is drawn as a two-by-six wall, it's about closest deck, so if we'll scale it, it's a foot.
Yeah.
So we could certainly bring that back.
But I think you need to be clear whether or not they have to include the step porch or whatever in their setback, if that's what the requirement is.
Larry said a handicap ramp, in his opinion, is allowed within the setback, but a permanent.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the ramp at all.
Right, no, I understand.
Just the, yeah, just the deck.
Now, we would agree to pull that back so it's flush with the front of the house. Rail.
Ma'am?
Yes, my name is Mathen Myers. I'm just Miller's neighbor. I live in a little cottage that my father built in the fifties. Mr. Lambert was the original owner of that apartment.
Somebody else has a floor.
And I want to know, Mr. Miller put up a wall, like, near my property, on his, right. Now, is that wall, is that where the house is going to be that high, or is it going to be higher than that? That's what I want to know. We have no, I have no idea how much higher that house is going to be. Because my lot now, because we never filled, it's an old cottage. Everyone filled with whatever, and there's more fill going in now. So how high is that structure going to be? Am I going to be, like, in this little pit? And how is the water going to impact that? Because as it is, there's a lot of water that comes in my yard because I'm the lowest point. Everyone has a berm, or they filled up their land. I just want to know, what's the water thing?
The proposal's twenty-seven foot five inches in height.
Right.
So that answers your question about how high it's going to be.
Right, so the house is going to be higher than that wall, twenty-seven feet?
I haven't seen any wall.
I mean, the wall actually was done for the septic system, it's just like a few feet high wall to keep the septic on the property without grading over the property line. That's all, and it's not that high wall, it's just like something this high.
So how much higher will the house be, the highest point in the house above that wall?
Will be the twenty-seven point something, because the wall is actually flush with, will be flush.
If the wall's four foot, then twenty-three feet higher is how high it is.
Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven higher, because the wall is flush with the front of the house, with the ground.
She says it's not, but, okay.
No, the wall and the ground are not at the same level. The wall is higher than the ground.
I can answer this, okay. The Madeline had requested from the Board of Health in terms of the design, she had sent a letter concerned about water runoff from the septic system into her yard. And she does have a problem in that it is low and water from the road does run into her yard. What the solution was, was to put a wall, okay, and a rubber membrane to capture any water. So now the wall doesn't allow any water to run off onto her property. Whereas if there were a bank in there, it would definitely run onto her property. So we've solved that problem by doing that, okay? The height, okay, of the wall, okay, is approximately two percent pitched to the road. So the water on the lot will run from the house towards the road, okay?
So the front yard is pitched towards the road?
Right.
The wall is, was built so that no runoff from your property will go to your neighbor's property?
That's correct. I installed septics, and that's a major problem, where water runs off and they get erosion onto other people's property. So I spent the money to put up the wall and prevent that. And only because Madeline had written a letter to the Board of Health that that was a concern, and it's a very valid concern, you know? Louis needs to grade the road so that she doesn't get water down on her property.
The other, the other thing is the runoff from the proposed house will be running toward the backyard, toward the lake, not toward anybody's property.
Right.
So the front yard is pitched towards the road, the backyard is pitched towards the lake?
And the house itself, all the runoff from the roof itself will be sent toward the lake, not toward the house, not toward the street.
All right, thank you. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Yeah, I wasn't expecting any runoff from Mr. Miller's septic at all. That's not my problem. My problem is the water, because my lot is so much lower. The water comes into my yard regardless. And with that higher thing, it's going to come down even more.
It changed the historic lay of the land and the flow of the water. And that's already substantially changed just by the septic system and movement of huge folders and things like that. So I think Madeline is just concerned it can really, her house is right down to the ground. It's been renovated very nicely, but it's still right down to the ground.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
So, okay, Kate, 127 Shore Road?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so basically, by that retaining wall being in, what happens is it stops the water from going in the Miller's yard, and it sends it into Madeline's yard. In other words, it's not helping, it created more of an issue. Because the water's not able to grin, it's coming, it's hitting the property, and then it's going up the wall into her yard.
It's an engineering issue.
I don't see this board to vote tonight, personally.
Well, this is just a, if I could say, this is just a drainage issue, has nothing to do with the zoning itself. It's something can be.
Nothing to do with what?
With the zoning, it was just a drainage issue.
I understand.
Something for, like, engineering designs. And something, we can talk to them and see what their problems, and we try to solve those, but.
Um, Mr. Miller, do you have a problem if the board members go out and take a look to, so we can better understand the, the board's questions?
Well, my concern is the time to put the foundation in is now when the groundwater is low, okay? And we've basically put it off to another meeting, and then there's a twenty-day waiting period. So I prefer to have a vote. As far as the runoff, you know, I think that's a Louis Trassino issue. We need storm drains in there to solve that type of problem. But the runoff from the road that is going into Madeline's property, she needs to build up a berm so it stays out of the property.
I understand what you're saying. However, I am, I'm only speaking for myself. I'm not ready to vote tonight.
Hey, I don't have to build up a berm. I live there.
Ma'am, ma'am, you're not recognizing.
All right, sorry.
Okay, thank you. So I, for one, would like to better understand what the board's concerns are. And it can only do that by going out to the site.
Okay.
And I, I don't know, certainly if the other members are ready to vote, and that's fine. I personally would like to see what they consider.
I'd like to go back out to now to visually see the.
Mike?
I don't think we can vote on it anyways until the plan's corrected, to reflect what it actually is, to be within the envelope in which you're presenting.
Lou?
Yes. Are they two different lots there, or is that one big lot?
No, it's, the two lots were combined, so it's a.
How were they combined? You combined them?
No, they, they had built a garage on the second lot and attached it to the house.
No, no, no.
So it's considered one lot.
Yeah, but it's divided in two, right?
No, no. They were originally two fifty-foot lots, but when you have them under the same ownership, they automatically get combined and.
I would move that we would continue the public hearing on this matter tomorrow, next day.
One second.
Okay. It's a special part.
I still had the floor, Mr. Chairman.
I rudely interrupted Mr. Tassino. I don't think he did. I rudely interrupted Mr. Tassino.
I'm sorry, he interrupted me.
So we have a motion to continue this public hearing to October meeting, which would be.
October tenth at seven fifteen.
October tenth at seven fifteen. And I think, with your permission, the board, some members, maybe all, would like to go out and just better understand what the board is talking about.
Absolutely, and maybe we could get some resolution on the road. Because that's where the issue is.
Well, that's not going to be.
Yeah, we're concerned about the people around you, how you affect them. Take a vote on that.
Well, I think the other thing we need to do is tell them that, which we said last month, we need a set of plans that's exactly what you're going to build.
That is exactly what we're going to build.
No, you just told us you're going to move the, move the deck back.
Yes, basically, what Mike had said, we will move that rail back.
I understand that, but we refer to the plan in our decision.
You're going to refer that to our decision.
Yeah, sure. So whatever adjustments, they should be addressed. So that the building inspector can go out and say, yep, this is what was approved, and this is what he built.
Yep.
Otherwise, you end up coming back.
Ah, yeah.
We don't want to do that.
There's a motion on the floor, Mr. Chairman.
Right, we have a motion by Mr. Holland, seconded by Mr. Blumberg, to continue this public hearing to October fifteenth?
Tenth.
Tenth, I'm sorry.
At seven fifteen.
At seven fifteen. Holland, favor? Aye. Aye. Everyone's welcome to come back, and we're here to hear everybody's concerns, hear the applicants.
Yes, and, you know, if you need me there at the property, you know, Marie can get ahold of me.
Great.
Yeah, we can do that.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, ladies. When you come back next week, if you could be easier, if you had one spokesman for us.
Everybody's entitled to speak their mind.
I know, but I mean, just.
And not only that, my issue is different than Madeline's. I live down the street.
Anybody that has any concerns will be recognized. I can assure you, anybody that has concerns will be recognized. All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
And Louis, come back again.
What, which one is this?
Waller Street. You don't have nothing on Waller Street?
Oh, Waller Street.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, you do, though. You can't sit here, the lake goes from your house to that one. And even Dan, you can't get in it.
All right.
You can't be in this one.
The next, um.
Oh, yeah, I was just trying to include you, though.
And then, and your doctor said you have to exercise.
Let's, let's move on, go on to the next case. Ma'am, if, ladies, if you'd like to talk, you're welcome to do so in the hallway. We'll move on to the other case, okay?
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. See you next morning. Okay, the next case is case number two zero one eight dash fifteen, which is the continued public hearing for Dan Dudley, one sixty, Waller Street. Applicant. The counsel available?
Let's see, let's spin on this one.
Both floors yours, Mr. Lane?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. We were here last, I think you requested that we provide a plan, and we did provide a plan. We provided Mr. Pollard's plan. And it is right there.
Is it up here? Please.
And as you can see, we do have several buildings that appear to be on or very close to the lot line. And in fact, do not meet the setback requirements in the zoning bylaws. But as we suggested as well last, last month, at least one of those sheds, which is the one, I guess, on the left.
This shed right here?
The one totally over?
That one, yeah, the one you were pointing at.
Yes.
Totally over, yeah, that shed. According to the records we have, it's been there since at least nineteen eighty-seven. We have a plan also done by Andrew's survey. Unfortunately, I only have one copy. And if you have any pass around, you'll see that the nineteen eighty-seven plan shows the shed.
Right on the line, that shed right there, right?
Over, there's one right over.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one over, it's been over the line since nineteen eighty-seven.
Okay.
And there was one of them.
Was there a record of any building permit taken off of that shed?
No, there isn't. So, let's put it this way, the town cannot find one.
How about the applicant?
The applicant didn't build it.
It doesn't matter, eighty-seven.
Built by his predecessor.
Nothing happened before eighty-seven.
No, the law says you don't need it.
Right, and that's the point.
Oh, Henry, come on, we can spin that over here. Come on, Henry.
What's that?
We can spin that one.
No, as you, as we mentioned, as Mr. Tassino is well aware, the statute says that if you have a building permit, you can, enforcement authority ends after six years. And if you don't have a building permit, your enforcement authority ends in ten years. We have over thirty years, so our position, at least with regard to that shed, is that there is no authority within the town to require us to remove that shed. Which isn't to say that Mr. Pollard may not have any recourse, but at least with respect to the town, we are now grandfathered with respect to that shed. We can't make the same case for the other sheds, and you will have to do what you need to do with respect to those. But at least with regard to the one that's over the line, that there is no enforcement authority with respect to that. So we would ask that, whatever decision you make with respect to the other structures, you make it clear that you're, you are not requiring us to remove that shed.
Mike?
Is this one sixty?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, this is the name of the shed?
That's Mr. Pollard's, or the Pollard's property, right.
Would you order Mr. and Mrs. Pollard, please? Mr. and Mrs. Pollard, please?
I did correct myself.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Lou?
Okay, now, you're talking about the shed that's on the line, right?
A long time, but the shed that's over the line.
Yeah, over the line, okay, now. And it's been there more than ten years.
Yep.
Right, and it's on their property?
That's correct.
Or the neighbor's property? No, whose, whose property is it?
It's in the neighbor's. This is his. It's in the neighbor's yard. That's what I just asked. This is one sixty. This is the neighbor's property. That's where the shed is.
That's where the shed is. I thought there was a house over there. That's just the shed we're fighting over here?
There's two houses now.
There's two houses.
One right there, and there's one over here. Over here, I'm sorry, to the right.
Okay.
Yep.
So the two houses that are on the, on the wrong lot.
No, they're on the right lot. The shed is on the wrong.
The shed's on the wrong lot.
Yes.
Okay, but it's right on the line.
It's actually over the line.
Oh, but it's been there ten years.
Been there thirty years.
Yeah, thirty years. A lot, very easy enough.
Mike?
Isn't this the neighbor's shed?
Yes.
So they should be applying for it.
Applying for it.
Well, they're encroaching the setback. If the, if the shed's in their yard, isn't it their shed?
I don't know, I'm not a.
Well, I'm a little confused.
Possession is an intent of law.
Well, sure, piracy works that way.
Well, I'm just, the applicant provided us with a plot plan that shows the property line, and it has a shed in the neighbor's yard. I don't understand what.
Well, I have no problem if the building inspectors want to stipulate that the enforcement order is not intended to be addressed to us, then that's fine. Withdraw, request with regard to that structure. But I don't want to, I don't make that presumption, I mean, the building inspector is here. If he wants to make it clear that enforcement order does not relate to that shed, because it's the Pollard's shed, then, you know, we'll deal with that.
Can I be so bold as to ask, why, what is that shed being used for?
I think it's just for storage.
Oh.
Nobody lives in it, if that's what.
The enforcement order, is that on one shed or three sheds, or?
It doesn't really specify, it just says.
I think it says multiple, didn't it?
Says multiple accessory buildings.
Good, you know, can we hear from the building inspector?
So, I don't know how Mrs. Pollard feels about using that plot plan to show anything, because Mr. Daly, Dudley, didn't pay for that. So I don't know if that should be even present. So there's a house here, there's another house with a garage under that was been permitted on this lot. So this plot plan supplied by Dan Dudley is not reflective of what's there.
It's not current.
Not current. So even if it's a shed on somebody else's land, I don't know why this plot plan is valid at all, regardless of the date. Okay, since it's totally on the neighbor's property. The issue I had, basically, was this, this. There's a little house here, it's the original house. There's another garage with an apartment above it, over here, that was permitted ten years ago. This garage shed, or whatever you want to call it, is unpermitted and un, not, not within the setback. There's another one here.
Another one what?
Another garage on this property, unpermitted. If you look at the setbacks, excuse me, it's not listed here, for that zone, I think it's. Fifty. Fifty in the front, twenty-five in the back. This whole lot is basically eighty feet, ninety-five feet. So if any building's on this lot over ten foot wide, it should have been covered, covered zoning. So that's kind of where your decision lays. The other point I have to make is, since they're looking for relief, it's, burden of proof is on them for the age of this and this other. of proof is on them for the age of this and this other. Okay, thank you, Larry.
The question Mr. Lynch did not answer is whether he is expecting that enforcement order to address that shed that's over the line.
Well, is it, maybe that shed belongs to a neighbor, I guess?
Well, that, it's a very simple question. He's issued an enforcement order, okay? And the question is, is he, did he intend that enforcement order to apply to that shed? If he did not, and we are not being asked to remove that shed, that's fine. If he is asking us to remove the shed, then that's an issue. But we have to know from Mr. Lynch whether he intended that enforcement order to apply to that shed.
I have a simple question.
Yes.
Why doesn't your client just move the sheds onto his property and make this all go away?
If it was that easy, we probably would have done that. But as Mr. Lynch has indicated, we have some real constraints with regard to the size of the lot.
Well, to apply for a variance, to put them on your property and less than the required setback.
That may well be the next step, once we sort out what we're being required to do.
It seems like.
It appears that an enforcement order should be issued to both parties, where there's a shed on the line over here, right here, that's in this one. So the neighbors encroaching in the setbacks, and then there's multiple buildings as well that Larry just mentioned throughout the property. So it looks like a second enforcement order should be issued to the Mr. and Mrs. Pollard.
She's been raising her hand.
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Diane Pollard, Six Shady Lane. I'm a middle school teacher, so I might need some clarification here. So, Mr. Chairman, could you please, just for a point of, and I don't know all of the individuals in the room, but are you from the Andrews Survey Company that surveyed our home? Did you contact myself or my husband to use our survey to, for this purpose? Did you contact us to ask for our permission?
No, I was not, I was subpoenaed to appear, according to my records.
Were we given any kind of, any kind of notification that this gentleman was subpoenaed and that our property that we paid over $5,000 for, for this survey, that we'd expressly said at our last meeting that we did not want to be used? That, were we notified in any way to be given our permission to be doing this? Not that I want to accuse Mr. Lynch of doing anything underhanded, I just would like some clarification on what just happened.
Okay, well, just, we're here to, they're appealing the building inspector's decision. So I think that's an issue between you and the neighbor, or you and the neighbor's attorney?
Understood, but I think that I should have been given, as the homeowner and the owner of that property over there, that I should have been asked before that made it up onto the easel, if that was okay with me to have that up there. And it just seemed to go by very quickly, as if perhaps I wouldn't notice, but when I heard that it was Mr. Pollard's and mine, that that was our plan, my first assumption, to assume best intentions, was that, that an additional one was created, that Andrews was hired to do an additional one, not that our property that we paid our survey, that is our survey.
I understand.
I don't understand the difference between doing it this way, or coming in my front door and taking our survey off my dining room table and bringing it over to that easel.
I understand, but that really doesn't have anything to do with the sport. I'm not saying that you haven't been wrong, all I'm saying is.
So my second question is, if I may, Mr. Chairman, is that in addition to the shed, which I would like to just clarify something here as well, that in our initial dealings with Mr. Dudley, the initial, we were more than happy to either purchase the shed from Mr. Dudley, or help him dismantle it and move it over to his property. We were told that this shed had a great deal of sentimental value in his family, and that he had no intention of moving it. And that is why we have not been, that's why we have, it has snowballed to this degree. So I agree that this probably could have been rectified very early in the process. The third thing I'd like to bring up is, in addition to the shed, I feel that there's something a little bit more important, and that is the location of Mr. Dudley's well. We have not been able to determine that, and there could be a possibility that the well is also on our property unbeknownst to us.
You'd have to take that up with the board, yeah, but.
We have.
Mike?
Just a question, is during the survey, did you ask the survey company to locate a well on your property?
At the time, we located our well on our property, but we had, it never occurred to us at the time that there would be an additional well that was there.
Not that it would be easy to see, but.
No, no, we weren't aware until after that there was a possibility that the well was also on our property.
Excuse me.
Lou?
Who was your engineer?
The person who did the survey?
Yeah.
I believe the gentleman who's representing this company, Andrews?
So you did the survey for her, right?
That's correct.
Then you came back and did the survey for him?
No.
No.
Oh.
No, he took our survey, they, no, no money was exchanged, no, money did not exchange hands, and that is our survey that we paid for, that is being used as a piece of evidence here without our permission.
See, I always looked at it, and I know that Henry will agree with me, but God knows if he will or not, if it's on that property, whoever's property that shed's on, that's who owns the shed. Am I right, Henry?
I won't.
He won't say nothing, but if the property's on your property, shed's on your property, you.
Mike, to the point of wanting to getting back to what we're doing, I think if we had asked for a certified plot plan from Mr. Lynch at the last meeting.
Right.
And we still don't have one. It shows the neighbors, but it doesn't show what's on his property. As the building commissioner pointed out on this one, I don't even know the date of the look at it. It doesn't show all the structures in there. So, again, I still think we need a certified plot plan from someone, showing what all the structures are, so we can identify those structures. And I still maintain that this other one that's shown in the neighbor's yard, that maybe Mr. Lynch should be issuing an enforcement order on that one as well.
Well, the butter has a shed on their property that they didn't know they had. So for them to be fined, I don't, I don't find that particularly fair.
I would say it's your shed, wouldn't you?
I'm not an attorney, but I would, sorry. Lou, I can't, I can't fathom this. I can't understand why a butter couldn't use some common sense, make this go away, move the two sheds onto his property, and end it. I mean, that's what normal situation would happen, but it's beyond me. I just, I just don't understand, I truly don't. There's no need for this hearing, there's no need for, all people have to do is be respectful of other people's property, and if it was an honest mistake, move it. If it was an intentional mistake, move it. I mean, I don't know, but I would, would be in favor of Mr. Lynch fining him $300 a day for every day that shed is, is not, is out of zoning setback conformance.
I was just given the shed.
This is just.
Yeah.
If it was as easy as simply moving the shed?
Knock it down.
You probably would have.
Rebuild it. It's simple.
If you, Henry, it's done every day of the year.
You heard Mr. Lynch tell you what the constraints of the site are.
Then destroy it. I mean, it's on somebody else's property. Don't people have rights? They're paying taxes for their own land, and there's a shed on their land, it doesn't belong to them.
I agree completely, I don't disagree with you.
So, why it ever got to this room is beyond me. Ma'am?
I just would like to add just one more thing, too, is that it's an insurance risk. Because if, if someone from Mr. Dudley's family were using the shed and should get hurt moving a piece of equipment on our property, then we would be liable, because suddenly the shed would indeed be ours. And that is not something that we want to take on.
Okay, thank you.
And as a teacher, I'm really disappointed in you. You should know better.
She didn't have any choice, I'm afraid.
Then that was, that was not, not okay.
Mike?
Again, I need a certified plot plan to understand the constraints of this lot.
Why don't you just give it the shed?
Doesn't matter what the constraints are, I mean, it's, it's a zoning violation.
And there's multiple zoning violations.
There's multiple ones, and they're appealing Larry's decision that says they have zoning violations. So they haven't proven that they don't have one, as a matter of fact, they've acknowledged they have one.
Refresh my memory, why are we here?
Because they're appealing.
To give them relief on these sheds?
No, no, they're appealing the building commissioner's decision.
Right.
Okay, so we can vote on that.
Okay, that's what we should vote on.
Right, and I think, well, I'd like to give them some guidance to, in terms, I mean, we just voted a few months ago to fine people, and money talks, makes, gets people to move.
Let me ask you, so, I apologize, the top property is whose property?
This is, this is Mr. Dudley's property from here to here, and this is the butter's property.
And the butter is the owner of the shed?
Mr. Dudley built these two sheds? He built these two sheds?
Which property, I apologize, which property, the bottom property is Mr. Dudley?
Yeah.
Correct.
And the top property is who? I can't read it, I cannot read it from my glasses.
Pollard.
Pollard, all right. There was an enforcement letter to remove from the Dudley property, the shed?
Larry, do you have a copy of that enforcement letter? Yes, I do. We do have for Mr. Dudley GIS map that shows the two buildings on his property.
Wait a minute, you're saying two buildings on whose property?
This is Mr. Dudley's.
Okay.
This is the original building, and then they put a garage with a living unit above that.
So where's the shed?
It's not on that.
You can see approximately, the little tiny shed is there, there's a garage type of thing here.
It's our certified plot plan, Larry.
And then there's another, I know it's not, but there's another, but even that shows the width of the property, that's eighty-five feet tops.
I guess what I'm suggesting is, is that, I don't know that if it's been open and notorious control, that the ownership interest is so obvious. But first of all, wouldn't they have it by adverse possession? Having, having had access to it, having had a property on there?
That's an issue that obviously is the elephant in the room. We've had it there for over thirty-five years. We, you know, I suspect if it's ever adjudicated, it's going to be determined that we own it by adverse possession, but we haven't got that, we haven't got that determination yet. We haven't got to that point, we probably will at some point, but, you know, we're not there yet.
Is it worth it? Is this, is, is, is this, is that thing worth paying you? Pardon me?
I'm cheap.
Apparently.
To let that stay there on somebody else's property? That doesn't make sense.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but that's not my, it's not my, it's not my decision either. I agree completely that neighbors acting in good faith should be able to resolve this one way or another. But obviously, since we're here, that's clear, that neighbors have not been able to resolve this amongst themselves.
I put, I hire the fence guy, and he put a fence on a piece of property. And when the guy did his survey, he found out the property was on his property.
The fence was on his property, yeah.
And the guy, his lawyer called me up, and he wanted to say, well, you gotta, I said, no, you tell your man, he owns the fence, it's on his property. That's it. I mean, that's easy mathematics, right?
Right.
I was lucky enough to.
Thank you, Larry.
That I knocked on the door of Pollard's, and I was lucky enough to go down the property line and take some photos if anyone wants to see them. What stuck out the most, in my opinion, is when you put these survey sticks in the ground, sometimes they last for three or four years, maybe even longer. So I found Andrews surveys, of course, with all the arts tape on them, whatever, but I did find some older ones that probably been there for numerous years, so.
Whose property were they on?
This is the property line between the two.
Oh, yep.
So they were lined up exactly where they were before. So I guess what I'm saying is, whoever did the survey before, whether that other building that's been pushed back, that's viewed here on this picture, is, I'd like to see where it is, obviously, he knew he was on someone else's property. Actually, it's been said by our building commissioner that we weren't supposed to talk to the wife, because she admits that they knowingly built the shed on this guy's property, or built that garage, whatever that is, so.
And we know about that.
Anyway, I don't know what you're talking about.
We're ready to.
Don't rise, yeah.
So the cases, they're appealing the building commissioner's decision to have them get into compliance.
As I said earlier, I understand what you have to do, and my only question is, can you specify if the order violates the building that's on the Pollard's property? Because as I say.
Can I say the two letters? He gave you the two letters.
The question is whether, whether it violates a setback requirement, and that doesn't really matter who owns the building, it clearly violates the setback. If the Pollard's own it, it violates a setback. If Mr. Dudley owns it, it violates the setback.
That's not why we're here tonight.
But the key is, regardless of who owns it, it's been there for more than ten years, and therefore the town is.
Where's common sense, Henry? Come on. There's no common sense in this?
Well, I understand that, but we need to have a decision on that issue, okay? And as I say, I don't, it doesn't, I'd say it doesn't matter, but we need to know whether the enforcement order, and I suspect that in all likelihood, the board is going to uphold the enforcement order, we need to know whether it applies to that shed. Because we take the position that regardless of who owns it, it's beyond this enforcement period, and the board has no authority to order that shed removed, without respect to who owns it. You can't order the Pollards to remove it, you can't order Dudley to remove it, because it's beyond the ten years. It's a simple proposition.
That same thing with my house.
Why would you, why would you want the neighbors to have the liability that's undue to them? They didn't do anything to incur this liability.
We can have that discussion sometime, but that's not this board's decision. This board's decision is, was that shed put within the setback within the last ten years, regardless of who put it up? And the answer to that question clearly is no, and therefore, we're simply asking, if you issue an enforcement order, an affirmation of the building commissioner's enforcement order, you make it clear that that order does not apply to that structure, because that's beyond the statute of limitations. The simple proposition.
You're talking about.
That's nitpicking.
Larry? I would have to assume that if it's on the Pollard's property, I would have to issue them an order to remove it. I'm talking about the other two buildings that are either over the line or not in compliance, the larger two buildings.
Okay, so you're talking about Dudley, the Dudley property, area, okay.
And he does say in here sheds.
Yeah, it just doesn't identify with sheds, it just says sheds.
He only identified one piece of property. And from what they presented, as well as what's up on that board, there's a shed on the adjoining piece of property, and that's why I had suggested at the beginning that Mr. and Mrs. Pollard also be issued an enforcement order, and I don't think that triggers a fine. Have you fined the Dudleys at this point?
Yeah.
So this has been going on for a month, so if they didn't agree with it, they would go through the same process as the Dudley's, and appeal a decision to keep their shed.
Or not, or.
Whatever, that's totally up to them, but the way, the stuff, the plot plans that's being submitted to us, the one that he submitted, and that the Dudley submitted, showing the neighbor's shed, but doesn't show their own. All right, so if we have to make a decision on that shed, is what Mr. Lynch is asking about, I guess then, to be fair, we would have to issue a enforcement order to the neighbor's property, because they're encroaching into the setback as well.
That would be different, I mean, that would be later on, because what we have to address tonight is what happens to.
Right.
If the building commissioner wants to.
I understand that.
If he wants to do, I understand.
Mr. Lynch is asking.
Which shed?
For us to make a decision on that shed. That's not what we're here for. We're here for Mr. Pollard, Mr. Dudley's property.
That's right.
And I haven't been on his property, I don't have a plot plan like I asked for, so I can only assume there's multiple sheds on there. So if the decision, so he wants a decision on those multiple sheds that are, on this property, I would assume, then that's the decision that we should be voting on tonight.
Or, or do we want to go back to your original suggestion, to have Mr. Dudley have a certified plot plan, so that we can see where all the buildings are, so that we can, we can okay the building commissioner's decision?
We asked them that, we afforded them another month in order to provide that, and they chose not to provide it. So based on the evidence that we have, and the information that we got from our building commissioner, I feel.
I believe last month, Mr. Lynch, you said that you were in disagreement with the Andrews plan. I think those are exactly your words. I think those are exactly your words, you disputed it, disputed the Andrew's plan.
I don't think the plan was presented.
No.
No, it wasn't.
We weren't allowed to see it, Mr. Pollard was here, and he had the plan, and he said he wouldn't unroll it if we, if I laid eyes on it, so I said, okay, doesn't come into evidence, and it didn't, so we subpoenaed it for tonight.
So, Larry, you, you're looking to enforce the sheds that are on the Dudley property? Right. So that enforcement, if there's sheds that are on a Butters' property, that, that was not your intent from that enforcement, your intent was to have them comply with the sheds that are on their property?
Great, thanks, that's just a clarification I was requesting, so...
Took us a while, but we got there.
We got there.
Alright.
So how's the motion going to, because you need to be in favor, so how does work?
They are appealing, he is appealing the building commissioner's enforcement order dated June 1st and the...
So, the motion should be made to overrule the enforcement order issued by the building commissioner?
No.
I'm asking you.
The motion should be to approve or uphold Mr. Dudley's appeal...
Okay.
...of the building commissioner's enforcement order dated June 1st and June 15th.
So...
Make it with respect to the buildings on his property.
It's, 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 that's what it says, that's what he said.
Says on property located at 160 Wallace Road, that Mr. Dudley's property.
The ones were clear, that does not include the Pollard's property.
So Mike made a motion to approve the appeal of the building commissioner's enforcement order dated June 1st and June 15th, 2018, pursuant to Chapter 48, Section 7, on property located at 160 West Street, Assessors Map 158, Parcel 19. Does that clarify everything?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We have a second?
I do.
We have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, a second by Mrs. Holmes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Oh, I had it backwards, Mr. Clark, I apologize.
Okay, would you like to retract that?
I apologize.
So it's unanimous?
Unanimous.
Alright, so the decision unanimous to uphold the building commissioner's enforcement order for property at 160 Wallace Road.
Okay, thank you for your consideration, it's always a pleasure.
Thank you. I didn't want to see that, it was the best side.
You know what, we can close the public hearing, so, let's do that, and we'll do it all over again.
Hey, Henry, we gotta do it all over again.
We need to close the public hearing. Do I get a second, might it be up?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have any new information, council?
Make motion to close the public hearing.
Alright, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, close the public hearing.
Second, 00113.
Seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick, all in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is closed.
Can you read my motion again?
Yes, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to uphold the appeal of the building commissioner's enforcement orders dated June 1st, 2018, and June 15th, 2018, pursuant to Chapter 48, Section 7, on property located at 160 Wallace Road, Assessors Map 158, Parcel 19. That motion was made by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mrs. Holmes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 No.
No. Go ahead. All in favor? All in favor?
No.
Opposed?
Aye.
Unanimously opposed?
Thank you.
Who's next? Did you okay?
No, no, no. Oh, yeah, you gotta leave again.
I'm alright, thank you. It has nothing to do with the sheds, it's far beyond that.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
That's a good idea.
Okay. Okay, next case is...
You can leave now anyway, because you gotta leave.
Yeah, you can leave.
You can't sit here for this one, this is Roseland Road, you own the terrace. You can't even vote on the mailbox at the time.
Birch Hill. Let's go fix my roads.
But you own all the roads, remember? You bought the whole community, that's what you said.
My own virtue.
That's right. Louis, are you excusing yourself?
Yes, yes, I'm excused.
Okay. Next case is case number 2018-14, a public hearing of Eugene Gilman III, 1 and 3 Reed Road, the application was August 22nd, and applying for a variance. The, it was posted in the town hall, as well as advertised in the Winston Telegram Gazette, and it read as follows, "The Town of Douglas zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at 8:00 PM for Eugene L. Gilman III, he is requesting a variance in a rural agriculture zone district pursuant to the Douglas zoning bylaws to allow the construction of an accessory garage on an undersized, put grandfathered lot with less than the prescribed front, side, and rear setbacks on property located at 1 and 3 Reed Road, Assessors Map 284, Parcels 205 and 206." Certified mails came back, Maria?
Yes.
Okay, great, the public hearing is now open. The applicant or representative?
Oh, your bags are gone!
We didn't miss you. I recognize that tie anyway.
I'm getting that tie for Christmas.
It's either University or Michigan, if you're from there, or if you have relatives in the Navy, it's also the Navy. I have relatives in the Navy.
Mr. Lane, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the board members, this is, as you indicated, this is a request for a variance.
Good, remember this, remember this one?
There are names who are seated here, and as you can see from the application, they currently live at 1 Reed Road, corner of Birch, Birch Hill and Reed Road, and they would like to add a garage to their property, the lot's fifteen thousand, almost sixteen thousand square feet, and it's a combination of the properties 1 and 3 Reed Road, so the, the house was originally at 1, and they subsequently purchased the vacant lot behind them, which is 3 Reed Road, so they're now combined into a sixteen thousand square foot area. So, it's a grandfathered situation, so the building is grandfathered, obviously, it's been there for years, and as I said, we just now adding an accessory building.
I apologize for the late notice, but I think I should step off on this one. Sorry.
No problem.
Really?
Much faster things will go.
Voting on this case would be Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mrs. Holland, Mrs. Holmes, myself, and Mr. Bombara.
Must be all up, and you said Mrs. Holland.
Go ahead, Attorney Lane.
One of the, one of the issues we have is that this is, as a combined situation, it's a, it's a corner lot, and unfortunately, the Douglas zoning bylaws are not as clear as they might be with respect to how you treat corner lots, so depending on whether the frontage is on Reed Road or Birch Hill Road, the rear lot setback changes, if it's, if the frontage is on Birch Hill Road, then the rear, if it's not on Reed Road, then we meet the rear lot setback, if it stays on Birch Road, Birch Hill Road, then we don't, we're five feet short, as they require, twenty-five, and we have twenty, and a similar situation on, on the front lot setback, the requirement's fifty feet, Birch Hill Road's the frontage, then we clearly meet it, if Reed Road is the front, then we're twenty-four feet short, so again, depending on how you treat the corner lot, we either need several variances or only one.
What is the legal address of the property?
Yeah, it's Reed Road.
Well, it's 1 and 3 Reed Road, but...
The front of the building is on Reed Road, it's not on Birch Hill.
No, but the lot has frontage on both, it's a corner lot.
Corner lot.
I guess we could, but I think, I think that the state of Massachusetts probably has a definition for where the address is, depending on the sighting of the house.
I'm not disputing what the address is, or what, I'm just saying that Douglas's bylaw does not specify how you treat corner lots, different towns have, you know, that specify that it's the longest frontage, or the, the one that the house face, you know, there's all kinds of bylaw requirements with regard to how you, how you address that, the only question here is, you know, I'm assuming the worst, and, and that's what we need the application for, but I'm saying this is ambiguity, because Douglas's bylaw doesn't specify how you determine which is front, which is rear, or some towns say you have to meet it on both corners, you know, and again, Douglas does not have that provision, so, you know, I'm not saying there's anything wrong, I'm just saying this is ambiguity.
Will we, in agreement with the house's frontage, if the frontage is on Reed Road?
Correct. Aye.
Same address.
Okay.
Do you remember, do we remember this from a year ago? Because I do it.
I think Henry is just trying to help us identify some loopholes in our zoning bylaws.
Yeah, yes, you made a way though.
So, so, you know, assuming that we agree that Reed Road is the frontage...
We do.
Then, then we meet, then we meet the rear lot requirement, and we only need a variance for the side lot and the frontage, and the front lot setback, because we don't meet those. Then we have thirty-six in the rear, we only need twenty-five, so we comply there.
So you don't comply with the front?
You don't comply with the front or the side, with five feet short on the side, and twenty-four feet short on the, on the front lots like that, so that's, that's the, they say we're fine with that, I mean, we can't make it, we can't make it fit, basically the situation, but as I say, this is, this lot's three times, almost more than three times the size of many of the budding lots, we can, we can comfortably put the garage in there, it's obviously an accessory use, which is permitted, grandfathered situation, years ago, we didn't even consider this to need a variance, but under the current regime, I guess technically this does require a variance, very similar to the one you gave last month, who, I can't remember who it was.
No, because there's a double lot, right.
Right.
Because I know this one is...
Actually, it's a triple lot.
Triple.
So tell me about the pond in the front, that's shown on the drawing, man-made drainage pond?
That's something I just created with my own...
You know what, so you just can't speak out, you have to be, name and address, because the minute taker needs to know who's speaking.
My, my name's Eugene Gilmain, I own the property.
Okay, thank you.
It was some runoff from another lot coming down the hill, it kept dying to wash, running down the road, so I created that just to keep the water in check, so it wouldn't wash out the road until I put something there, so it's not an existing pond, it's something I created, just to swell.
You do have some drainage problems, I was up there before the construction on the road on Wallam Lake took place, and there's not much left of Reed Road.
No, it's been, it's been like that for years.
Those are all gravel.
Oh, yeah.
Gravel went back into the lake.
That's Louis' road.
Sorry, anyway, I couldn't...
That's right, we're gonna fix that, so, we'll speak to the owner of the road and see if we can upgrade that.
Don't look at it, go back with that. I'll hang on to these. I take my issue to Mr. Gilman's request.
I mean, just thinking, is there any reason, you have, you meet this rear setback, is there any reason they couldn't move this back so that you could minimize the needed variance for the front?
I guess it's, there's nothing we can do to make it comply, could we shift it, could we just shift it?
Well, if we shift it back, it puts it, puts it to the property line, and it's gonna have, we're gonna have a hard time pulling into the garage doors, because the garage doors actually face the house.
Face the house, yeah.
And that's, that's why I was trying to kick it back that way, so we don't have to make the swing, I could push it back the other way, but then, like I said, we have twenty feet now, and it's not enough now, so if I push it back, you have more room between the house and the garage to pull in, then you're gonna, you're losing the back, setback to the back, so I just figured that's the best way to put it, there's a big boulder to the right of my garage, that the excavator couldn't even do anything with it, I mean, it's that big, so we have a hard time with that too, so I think that's the best way to deal with that.
So, Mr. Chairman, is this a three-car garage?
Yes, it is.
Yep.
Three-car garage. So, but you're proposing to be eighteen feet, eighteen point three from the existing house, so if you did move it back, it appears you'd still be eighteen foot three, and this...
No, no, I'm talking about, I was probably moving it back towards Doug Hurley's property.
Twenty, he's going backwards.
I think he wants a drag on this side.
Exactly, yes.
It's huge.
This is, this is probably half the size of the garage.
He's got eighteen, but he's got a jog in the house too. What he's saying, Dan, is there's a, a large boulder right here in this corner?
Mm-hmm.
And that's what's preventing him from sliding over.
Board members, have any questions? Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak on this matter? Ma'am?
I'm Dale Bruley, I live at, well, I have a house at 4 Kearney Road, and I'd like to speak in support of the application, improvements to the neighborhood is always a good thing, garages are in short supply in the neighborhood, and I support this.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to be heard on this application?
Actually, Joe Ivory, 21 Birch Hill Road, a Butters to Eugene and Cheryl Gilmain, Gino and I spoke about it, because our lots of Butts, and because there was a change in the grade when they built the house, Gino had put in, and Cheryl had put in a retaining wall to hold, to hold back the change in grade, and it was just the stones that were there on the property, and our only concern was with the building of the garage, was it going to impact that retaining wall, and Gino and Cheryl assured me that they were going to actually improve that retaining wall with, with a mason, that was our only concern, because it was, our property was, over time, when our property was built, it was terraced on the terrace, it was, we actually have, I don't know if you, we have the glass front house, if you ever drove down Birch Hill, so if you see that, there was a terrace up into Angel, and there's a terrace up at the part of Birch Hill, and it was there, so that's all, our only concern is that retaining wall that was there when the house was built doesn't get disturbed with that, if they happen.
Ma'am?
My name is Cheryl Gilmain, I also own the property, we haven't been able to do any improvements, because we've been waiting to see if we get approved for the garage, so what we want to do on that whole area is design something really nice, but we're like at a hold right now, because we don't know what we're gonna do, based on the garage, so we plan on fixing everything very nicely.
We support the garage, it's just, I was just in the building...
Believe me, I don't want that wall there.
So I'm so happy to see neighbors talking to neighbors. How did you get a client like this?
He got lucky.
We have friends who are well known.
Friends before he knew, he knew Henry.
Okay. Any board members having any questions for the applicant or their counsel?
Happy to see some setbacks, a little...
Okay.
Six inches off the line, like they already said that we had to deal with the line a long time ago.
Ten-car garage.
Yeah. Anyway. So we, we do close the public hearing?
Yeah, anybody else that wants to speak on this, before we close the public hearing?
We're just, I'm Charlotte Ivory, we're right next to them, we're all in favor of them putting up this garage, we really are.
We got a space in it, or what?
No, my eyes waving enough, no, but, no.
Okay, so let's take a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Bombara, to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board, want to make a decision tonight on this?
Yes. Go ahead, Dan.
What, what, what?
Go ahead, Dan.
You know, we've been asking people for plans, do we have a plan?
We do.
We have a plan.
Okay, oh, sorry.
Yep, and then they drew, brought in a plot plan too.
You had to look through, hold with him.
It got stuck in the Tassino file, shall I say?
How come it's... Tack Louie night.
Okay. So...
Well, I'll move that we approve the request for variance for the Gilmaines, case number something like that.
2018-
2018-14.
I'll second it.
Okay, and that'd be approved, um...
As intended.
For 38 by 28 garage.
Yep, sorry, as corrected, thank you for correcting.
One dash three, ma'am.
On the plan drawn up by-
Karen Hanlon.
Karen Hanlon, on what date?
February 6th, 2018.
Thank you. That's the one.
And built in accordance with the plan submitted, drawn by-
SW Design Services.
SW Design for Gino and Cheryl Gilmain.
Okay, that makes it complete. Anybody wanna... I'll amend my motion to include all of that. Who seconded?
I did. I'll second it.
We have a motion by Mrs. Holmes to approve the variance request for the Gilmaines, seconded by Mr. Bombara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We'll get the decision drafted and get it signed as soon as possible.
Thank you. And Louis, you will fix the roads in the meantime?
I'll make the motion. So, what?
Thank you.
I had Hummer.
This has been a long process.
It hasn't been that long.
Yes, it has.
Well, on your end, but we don't need to-
Yeah, we only saw you twice.
Work enough.
Don't have to see me anymore.
But we'll miss you.
We're gonna come look at it after Louis fixes the road.
Yeah, I'm not going on this road. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Thanks.
Alright, the meeting's still in progress.
Hey, take that outside, will ya?
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Hey.
Thank you.
Okay, I want you to know this now, you guys, you know, playing around with this car out there, but you know, I did buy two toe boots off the mess.
Can we come visit you? Is that your dog house?
What else we gotta discuss?
I'm putting them up at Birch Hill.
One thing with Larry.
On the road, baby.
Come on up, Larry.
You wanna use my road, you gotta pay me right there.
I like it, and you gotta fix it, too.
Yeah, I don't care about that.
Alright, there's just one, we're gonna do the minutes in next month's meeting, but, at our last meeting, we had approved a request for the parents?
Parents. Yes.
Yes. And in the approval, we had said that they asked them to submit plot plan to Larry to... Before we signed, signed it. And he just got it today. So, um...
Maria got it today.
Maria got it today. So, I don't have the paperwork from that particular hearing, but we have to make a decision we did make, but I don't think it becomes official till we get it to the town clerk.
Yeah, the town clerk has this template.
Right. So, um, I'm just gonna ask Larry to do it as soon as possible, I was gonna ask every member to come in and sign it and vote on that case as soon as possible.
I've got the minutes here, they were from July 11th.
Okay.
So, the clarification, the plot plan just came from the applicant?
Yes.
Today. So, why is it-
He's engineer.
He's a non-apple?
Because we're required to make a decision within so many days of it being filed.
Days were always expired.
It was a, um... It was a variance? 100 days of application, that's right. So, and it was a variance. I don't have-
So, no, it should have been a special-
It should have been a special.
Because it had a...
Okay.
It had a house on the property, existing property.
Right, but we were involved.
Yeah.
So, I guess my point is, if we can just, as soon as Larry drafts, if we can review it and get it signed, because that time deadline is-
Approaching.
Getting, is approaching, thank you.
Okay, so it was approved, so really no harm, no foul, if-
We get it done before the time-
If there's a, if there's, if it flips over into some weird date, it should be okay, because I don't think we-
To the best of my knowledge, it probably should have said something like, the clock starts when the-
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Well, I don't know whether you can anticipate that these, that people are gonna lag, I don't know.
Well, he did, and the engineer did.
Yeah, it was all, yes, 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 you get it, yes, yes, you get it.
I think-
We get it today.
Did you plan this plan?
Larry reminded him how critical these are.
Nobody should have to call in, Aaron reminds them, engineer.
This brings up a good topic, as far as, um... He's done, I'll ask him. When you make a decision, like on the parents, you gave them a denial letter? For them to come to us?
Right.
Okay. Did you have a plot plan then?
I believe so, yes.
So, why were you, what were we waiting for, another plot plan for?
No, because it had to have the house-
The house set on the plot, right.
That's what we're waiting for. Okay. We talked about it. Moving forward, can we make sure that's part of the application process?
Sure.
To eliminate this problem?
Yeah, I mean, these people that just left came very well prepared, they had plans, they had a plot plan showing the proposed, so...
Yeah, but these people here?
Yeah.
Nice people, but they've been here how many times? Five times?
No, twice.
Twice.
They only came twice.
They went true last time.
They went true last time, and last time they had misinformation about combining-
But it's like the Millers, they're two. There should be some sort of guidelines that says if you have, uh, this much land that fits in the setbacks, your house should be some proportion less than that.
Well, that's-
Yeah, but we don't have that part of our zoning as of yet on percentage of lot coverage.
But that's not up to the sport.
No.
No, but as far as-
You suggest to the-
As far as us hearing cases, we should, we should have a certified plot plan submitted with the application, because we don't have that. The thing is, the shed deal is, we don't have one, so how do you make a decision?
Well, that goes right back to the building, that should be on the list.
That's why he's sitting here and I'm bringing it up.
That's right.
So, anyway.
Yeah, you'd let us know.
I think that we should have a certified plot plan with the application.
We do that, Maria, on any future applications, have them submit a plot plan, I don't know that needs to be certified, but at least a plot plan that has dimensions on it.
Yeah. Well, no, no, if it's not a certified plot plan, because Franklin Road, the guy on Franklin Road said he was gonna be three feet from the property line, find out that his house was 10 feet over, and he was only, now he don't have enough room, he would've been in, and he can go to the right side and put it up without a variance.
Yep.
So, if he had a certified plot plan, it would've stopped all that nonsense.
Right, right from the, he wouldn't have been here.
I think we shouldn't accept it, Maria shouldn't accept an application without one.
Certified plot plan?
Yes.
Well, when it comes to an appeal of the building commissioner, I'm not sure whether or not that I don't know-
Okay, so then the building commissioner probably should require a certified plot plan in order to make a decision.
But he does when he gets your application.
Can't do that.
Uh, I'm sure it's illegal.
No.
Because if somebody had a shed, say, and I had a peep against them, that'll cost you 5,000 bucks to get a plot plan for a shed that might not be on the property.
Okay, so you're going back to Franklin Street, Franklin Street came in and asked you to put an addition on the left side of their house, and they went through the whole process, and then they realized, oh, I had a plot plan done, and-
Well, they needed, then they were the ones that absorbed that, because they wanna do something, not because something the building commissioner cited them for.
But I don't understand how you can make a decision if you don't know where the structure is on the property.
We can ask Henry.
Ask Henry. Anyway.
Anyway, we got, we got- On some of the cases, I think it's-
What's that?
On some of the cases, it's, that's a lot to ask somebody financially.
Yeah, that's it, that's it, no.